Let's begin. This is the planning board meeting, November 7th, 2017. And I'll begin by reading our agenda, then I'll read the, then I'll open the public hearing. Our agenda is the public hearing on EA zoning changes. Next on our agenda is housing issues, general plan update, and other business in minutes. And I will take a motion to save the other agenda items until the future meeting and limit our discussion tonight just on the hearing.
So moved.
One second. Further discussion, all those in favor? Okay, so...
Can I just also open, since the members of Housing Partnership are here as well, and we have a quorum, so I'm opening the hearing, the members of the partnership, Housing Partnership, who are attending tonight, so that if they have questions, they may also ask questions. Thanks.
Okay. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and read the notice of public hearing. And I'll let, I'll remind everybody that we're going to follow all our regular rules for meetings, and that this is being recorded, and that we'll go through the, I'll read the notice of the hearing, and then ask the proponent to speak about both, about the, about the, his proposal, because we have two articles to discuss at this hearing. They're both intertwined, and I think will both be in context with the proponent making a presentation. And then following that, we'll have discussion and looking forward to lots of lively input. So with that, I'll read the notice of public hearing. The Sherburne Planning Board will hold a public hearing, that's today, Tuesday, November 7th, at 7:00 PM, Town Hall, to consider town meeting warrant articles that would make the following changes to the zoning bylaws. One, amend section 5.6.5 of the zoning bylaw by eliminating the one mile from Washington, North Maine/South Maine intersection limit for elderly and affordable EA zoning eligibility, and establish a category for age-restricted housing with 10% affordable housing. So eliminating the one mile. The second article is to rezone parcels at 104 Coolidge Street to EA in conjunction with approval of a preliminary development plan for a project at that site. So to rezone 104 Coolidge to EA. The full text and map of these proposed changes are available, and we'll see them tonight, and they're also available online, and at the planning board and Town Clerk's office. So with that, I will ask the developer, Trask Development Company, to present their proposal for the project, and then we'll discuss the articles afterwards. Please, when it's time for public comment, we've got a speaker here, or a microphone, a microphone. Whenever you want to speak, please wait to be recognized.
It's Jano.
Identify yourself and your address, and then we'll try to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. If you've already spoken, let the next person speak. Address the board, and the board can refer the question to anybody that the board chooses or the proponent. And so we'll just follow those rules. We've done this before. So with that, I'll ask Ben Stevens to present the preliminary development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ben Stevens of Trask Development, and Matthew Stevens of Trask Development were here today. I know a lot of you have already seen this, but for those who are seeing it for the first time, I will hopefully not go too fast. We've got a quick little presentation to sort of walk through the project. And without further, let's start it up. What we're proposing, this is the, about 22-acre site up in the north corner, if you will, of Coolidge Street, at the intersection of Meadowbrook Road, Coolidge Street, near the Natick-Framingham line, where Coolidge Street and Butts-Speen Street. We are proposing a development of 67 units, all 55-year-old housing. 60 of the units will be open market for sale units, with first-floor masters, second-floor bedrooms, roughly around 2,000 square feet. Within the project, there will be seven affordable units that can either be sold at the affordable rate mandated by the state, or there may be a cooperative agreement with the town where we would rent them through some of the town rental programs, where we could master lease them to the town, and then the town could handle them as part of their affordable housing stock. We're open to all suggestions, and I don't think we really need to define that, per se, at this point. Those seven units would all be either the single-level living, if you will, so they'll be either handicap-accessible day one, or they'd be handicap-adaptable day one, which would wide doorways, showers that could be pulled out, stoves that can be pulled out and adjusted as handicap-accessible. Assuming there's a local preference that can be put upon that as well, working with the Sherburne Housing Authority, or to try to have that be part of a local housing initiative Like I said, the site, if you're familiar with it, is up off Coolidge Street. We've highlighted the acreage there, it's about 20 acres, known as 104 Coolidge. We've combined it with about two acres of the site we own adjacent to 84 Coolidge. And the site has access out to Coolidge Street, the two locations, and is sort of a back entrance onto Meadowbrook Road. That particular site is about a mile and a half from the West Natick MBTA station. It's about a mile from the Roach Brothers, I believe it's a Walgreens, Roach Brothers, at the 135 and Speen Street interchange in Natick. And we're about three miles from the pipe entrance. So for sure, but it's a relatively convenient location for mass transit and shopping, et There's a blow-up of the site. You see, we have an access point on the back. We abut the aqueduct to the north, so the suburb aqueduct runs along the north edge of the property. To the east is the Sassman Trace Golf Course in Natick, part of the Dallas Orchard, and then there's a home at the end of Rockwood Street. To the south, we abut my parcel at 84 Coolidge, along with the back parcel of a house at 86, right there. That parcel is 86 Coolidge. Their house is down here on the street. There's a wetland that piper kicks the property, but that's 86. This is my site, that is the Rockwood site is right there. This is the Sassman Trace, and there is the aqueduct with the homes along Meadowbrook. The plan you see in front of you is the same plan that's up here. And what you're seeing is a layout of the property, or I'll show you this plan, it's actually easy to read. There are 60 units that are laid out in either single-family homes or duplexes. The units are all the same size, they're about 2,000 square feet. We have a dozen of them that'll be a single-family condition, and we have 48 of them of the 60 units that'll be a duplex condition. There's no three-unit buildings or four-unit buildings, it's just either singles or duplexes. As proposed, they're all the same size right now, they're about 2,100 square feet. My understanding, the way the bylaw is drafted, that if this is permitted, then they wouldn't be any bigger than that. There may be some flexibility if they became smaller, but there wouldn't be any more square footage than is permitted through the EA zoning vote December 6th. We have seven units in this general area, all single-level living. These are the rental units, as we see them, or the affordable-for-sale units. And then we have a small clubhouse building. It's about 2,000 square feet on the first floor, which would be a meeting room, an office, a manager's office, if you will, and then there's a 2,000-square-feet space on the bottom, which would be a small gym. As shown, the plan respects the buffer setback, which in this, in the EA zoning, is 60 feet. So what you're seeing here is the 60-foot buffer setback requirement throughout the project. And then there is also a 25% open space requirement. So the dark green represents the open space parcel. So we have a small parcel here, the entire center, we'd like to leave as an open space because there is a small, the property rises up to a small hill and then falls back on this side. So this would be a, we'd like to leave this alone as wooded. There is a wooded wetland down on this side, as we've marked on the plan. We have some drainage, but for the most part, we'd leave this area untouched. And then we would have to contribute approximately two acres of the piece I own at 84 Coolidge as additional open space. This, for those of you who know this site over here, this is the power line. This is the open field in front. The existing house at 84 is right there. There is a sort of a meadow slash wooded wetland in this general area, and this is a rising hill along the backside, which we're hoping to not have to do much on, other than establish our well field for our water services. This is a plan we built, we built about 100 townhomes in three different projects, in the Sherburne, I'm sorry, in Sudbury, in Southborough area. We built this particular unit, it's a first-floor mastery unit. It wasn't in a 55-year-old community, but it was definitely marketed that way when sold. It's about 2,100 square feet. It's a very functional unit, two-car garage, first-floor master, second-floor bedroom, and two and a half baths. That's the actual. This project is in Southborough, that is a first-floor mastery unit. Quickly on the layout, once again, two-car garage, dining room, kitchen, sort of an open family room area. You get your dining room, your kitchen, your open family room area, first-floor master suite. Second floor, you got a bedroom, you got another full bath, and then it's basically open loft area. These units aren't very high, aren't very tall, so we meet the height requirement, which is 35 feet. We'll have no issue with these units, they're in the 28 to 32 feet high at the max at the ridge line. We do have some walkout conditions on the unit, so these units on this side of the project will be walkout. These units will have patios. All the center units will have patios. These units along the aqueduct will also have sort of walkout basements. Just a quick schedule, as required by the EA zoning of our total square footage, as we proposed. Like I mentioned, I do believe this would be a maximum, and we would talk more specifically with the planning board when we had to come back into site plan approval. If there were some reductions, or maybe some opportunity for some smaller units that the planning board would like to talk about, that's something we would do under the site plan approval, but as stated, this is a maximum square footage we would be applying. Includes all of our bedroom counts, our percentage coverages. Go ahead, Matt, I can go to the next slide, it's all percentages. So you see, we've got a building acres of 22 acres. We have 5.5 acres of open space, which is the green parcels. We have about 6.5 acres of, we're calling it green space, which is the 60-foot buffer, which cannot count as open space. So we've added it as a separate category, R-word, green space. We have about 13.7 square feet of the park. Project is covered by buildings. We have about 13.7 covered by either parking or roadways. The wetlands on the side are about 3.5%. There's a small wetland, like I said, up in this, a forested wetland here, which drains the back half of the property, catches into a culvert, runs underneath the aqueduct and enters into a larger wetland system here. This wetland tends to drain to the south. It catches this hill coming from my property, and these parcels drain back to it. It catches here, runs out into a culvert underneath, onto the Sweet Meadow Farm parcel. And there are some wetlands that are sort of meandering in here, not large wetland systems, but man-made wetland systems, which are attempting, they sort of make it over to a culvert drain system here underneath the aqueduct, which is then picked up into a drain easement, which I think picks up most of Meadowbrook and heads out to Coors Brook. All through drain easements out to the Coors Brook Wetland System. Just a quick summary, like we mentioned before, we have 12 single-family units, we have 48 duplex units, and we have seven affordable units. We've done a market analysis. We actually probably overestimated our initial value on the market side, although I still feel confident that there's room to bring these numbers higher. But the market analysis kind of said we're going to be in the $650,000 to $750,000 range for these units. Obviously, there's a, there's a strong market for 55-plus units. There's no such zoning in Natick, there's no such zoning in Wellesley, there's limited product, I don't think there's any zoning in Medfield, but certainly there's in product in Medfield, nor Needham. So we have a strong base in this general area of buyer, a buyer pool that would like to be in this type of product, that has homes that are beyond this value and can downsize in both in house size and in, and in cost. We're seeing a very strong market in the Southborough range. Everything is reselling in the 600 to 650 range. There's a very strong push, the project, on the mass pipe in Framingham, which is challenged to me because of the noise from the mass pipe, but they're pushing their numbers into the 650 for a similar product. So we feel very confident that we could start below 650 and easily end up 750,000 or 800,000. We have a similar project, we're in permitting stages right now in Natick, it's less than a mile away. It won't be a 55-year-old older, but for 2,100 square feet, we'll be targeting that market, and we're going to be probably 789 to 799 in that market. And we're literally a mile, maybe a mile and a half away. I do believe there is, yes, there's a locational situation in Sherburne, but because of where this is on the north side, it's going to have the easy access to the pipe, to the shopping, to the mall, so it doesn't, isn't as challenged, and maybe the south-side location would be because of the traffic coming through the center of town. So we feel confident in this. What's going on in Abbey Road has sort of proved that to some extent. It's a different type of project, it's got a better location, being in town, Abbey Road is, but we feel confident in these numbers, that we just have these numbers. So just to give you, go back one second, Matt. From a taxable standpoint, we're looking at somewhere around gross, gross sales at around $42 million. Using the current tax rate at full value, if you will, that does represent about an $800,000 increase in tax revenue from this project. Quick little analysis, a quick little summary of our company. I've been doing it since 1993. Matt has just joined me this year. We've built, everything we've done has been Metro West, Southborough, Natick, Wellesley, Willand-Framingham, Tonin-Natick, Sudbury, Weston. That's where we are, that's where we're based, this is where we're staying. And we've done probably four, 300 to 400 homes, we've done 100-plus townhomes, and we've done rental units. We've done 60-unit rental in Ashland, and another infill downtown Ashland project of another mixed-use, another 12 units. But we're dedicated to this area, we're not on the North Shore, the South Shore, this is where we are. We don't go to the North Shore, we don't go to the South Shore. Most of you know this already, but the project where this land is being permitted, where we're asking for the EA zoning, is currently filed as a 40B application for 88 units, using just this parcel, not this land, if you will. So there's an 88-unit parcel for sale, three-bedroom units planned on this piece. It's been in the Housing Appeals Court for nine to 12 months, I believe. We don't know what the status is, we expect that there'd be a result by now, there isn't. We're all sort of waiting for something, some sort of determination to be kicked out of the Housing Appeals Court. I personally think the 60-unit elderly housing, the EA zoning, is a higher and better use for the property, both personally, for Trask. It's a more profitable project for Trask, it's a less regulatory project for Trask, and I hopefully am trying to convince town folks that it's the right project for Sherburne as well. I'm not claiming I'm a hero or anything, I'm doing this because the 55-year-old project will sell quickly, there's a strong market for it, we avoid a lot of the regulations that follow the 40B with the reporting analysis, and the profit centers, you have to go back. It's getting to be more and more challenging, and we recognize that, so that's why we like to do this project. This is in your handout, I don't really need to go through it, but briefly, what is, what did, we did a quick analysis based upon a couple of assumptions, and the assumptions are pulled from documents created for other projects. One was done for Nash and Valum by a consultant firm. Basically, we took the 88-unit for sale project, 40B project, which would be an all-three-bedroom unit project, and presumably is going to be marketed to families as opposed to 55-plus. The bedroom count, which is somewhere in the 1.2 children per unit, based upon a three-bedroom unit, has us anticipating about 106 school-aged children will be brought in by this original proposal for the 40B. Calling through the data, it's an estimate, but the estimate appears to be close, that each child, new child in Sherburne costs the town about $15,000 a year. There's a lot of parameters go into that, whether it's an increase of one or two, so there's no physical plan issues, or school teacher issues, or whether it's 20 to 30, and that represents a physical plan to a school child or a teacher issue. So we've done a quick analysis based upon other folks' data on the bedroom count, the projected revenue from the 40B project, which is very similar to Meadowbrook Commons, they're both in the $40 million total sales. But Sherburne is looking at a deficit of about $750,000, new taxes versus estimated school expense. The 55-year-old project, in all performance done in Massachusetts, there's generally no children brought into this project, not that they are excluded. One of the buyers has to be 55-plus on the D, doesn't exclude a child, that would be illegal, but the nature of the project is not necessarily for folks 55 or older, it's generally 60-plus retirees, folks trying to stay in the neighborhood, not folks looking for a housing alternative with children. Just not the neighborhood set up for it, and there's been some evidence of that in the Southborough projects and the Framingham projects, where there's just no children coming into the, coming into the unit. So we've taken an estimate of no children being brought in from the 55-plus unit, so obviously you've got a net positive of maybe $800,000 in tax revenue, give or take, that does not assume emergency services that we required, but we did strictly a school children, school, school cost analysis, if you will. Just to back up a second, this project is totally private. The infrastructure is private, the water supply system will be private, but mandated, but permitted through the state permitting process. The septic system would be private, but also permitted through the state permitting process, not local regulation. So beyond emergency services, there'd be no snow block requirements, or road maintenance, or anything. This would be a condominium association, having its own annual budget. The wastewater treatment plan would need to be handled by either ourselves as owner of this parcel, or there are companies that will essentially buy the wastewater treatment system for you because they're monitoring and collecting fees for the water and sewer use of the adjacent project. Not, maybe a strange animal for Sherburne, but not a strange animal for Massachusetts, there's a lot of wastewater treatment plants that are used. Waylon has one that is, that is basically, they have a wastewater treatment system that handles 90 units of residential units, but then also handles the shawers and a gym and the three or four restaurants in the center of town. It's not, it's a very common thing. That's the end of our presentation. We think that everything that was required of the EA is on this plan, or in our presentation. Hopefully I haven't gone too fast, but I'm hoping for questions, or we'll take it from there.
Yeah, let me, thank you. Before we get to the discussion, I want to turn the page that I prepared at the beginning, just to put this in greater perspective, I think. The process of what we're doing here, what you're here for, what we're all doing, is this is the planning board hearing for a zoning change. The planning board's required to do that. Tomorrow night is the advisory, we'll be holding a hearing tomorrow night here at Town Hall at 7:00 PM, for their hearing for the, for the warrant articles for Town Meeting, which will be December 6th, at Pine Hill School at 7:00 PM. So this is the process that's required by Sherburne bylaws to make any zoning change. And we've got two articles here to be considered, I read them in the, in the notice. The first article is to amend the one-mile requirement, and the other is to, is to review this preliminary development plan. So the preliminary development plan, what has to go in it is in our zoning bylaws, it's section 5.6.3, and it details what's in there. The planning board's required to do a couple of things. One thing is the planning board's required to say, to decide if the information that's required in, in section 5.6.3 in the preliminary development plan, to decide if the information that's been presented, all the information that's required is there, and then the planning board will also decide at the end of the hearing if we're in favor or against it, if we recommend it to the, to the town. Then, as I said, then it goes to an advisory hearing. Advisory will look at these articles and any other articles that are on the warrant, publish the warrant, and then we'll, the town will vote on, on these articles and the other articles of the town meeting, at the town meeting. So I should have, I should have begun with that, I didn't turn the page when I was supposed to. So we've been, we've got a checklist of things that are in that, in the, in the section 5.6.3, that we're, we're looking at a lot of, a lot, really what's been presented is specifically required in that preliminary development plan. So the first article is regarding the distance, so I'll read that, that article. So the first article is regarding the distance, so I'll read that article as it appears. So we're amending 5.6.5 in the special permits requirement for the EA, so this is EA only. A budding to this site is a 40B project, it's a state-controlled project, as Mr. Stevens said, it's been proposed for that site. That's not what this hearing is about. Obviously, what happens on one site can influence the other, but this hearing is specifically about the 84 Coolidge and the project that's in this package that we've just heard about.
104 Coolidge.
Sorry?
This project is specifically about 104 Coolidge.
104 Coolidge, sorry, sorry. Thank you, keep correcting me. So in the special permit section, we're, the proposal for the warrant article change is to delete the lot location section, which is 5.6.5B lot location, which states that no special permits shall be granted for any land which is more than one mile by public way from the intersection of Main and Washington Streets unless at least 25% of the properties within the business G or business P districts, as shown in the zoning map of Sherburne. So, and then it says, "Location should be readily accessible to shopping, transportation, and other public facilities and services used by the elderly." So it is proposing to delete that, and then in building occupancy, multi-dwelling developments and residence EA districts shall be designated as one of the following categories, that's the new language. And right now, we have age-restricted, which we're not suggesting change. We have age-restricted, we have affordable, now we're proposing adding a third. So for age-restricted, it does currently read, and we're not suggesting changing it, "If designated age-restricted occupancy shall be limited to families, at least one member, which is 55 years or older." Two is affordable, "If designated affordable, a minimum of 25% of the units within the entire development shall be restricted to occupancy by persons eligible for low or moderate-income housing, as defined in Section 760 Code of Massachusetts Regulations." Three is the new language, which the article is proposing will read, "Affordable age-restricted, affordable age-restricted. All units shall be limited to families, at least one member of which is 55 years of age or older, and a minimum of 10% of the units within the entire development shall be restricted to occupancy by persons eligible for low or moderate-income housing, as defined in Section 760 CMRA 56, as the same may be amended from time to time." So we're adding to our current, our current bylaw has a section for age-restricted, has a section for affordable, so we're proposing adding something so that it can be affordable and age-restricted, with a minimum of 10% of the units within the entire development to be affordable. So that's what the first article is about. And this preliminary development plan, which, if it's decided at Town Meeting to approve, if the town approves by two-thirds vote to accept this preliminary development plan, or as may be amended in this hearing, or at the advisory hearing, or a Town Meeting, whatever is finally approved, if it's approved at all, whatever's finally approved at Town Meeting, then that, then that then goes on to a process of developing a final development plan, and the final development plan has to adhere to the preliminary development plan with some variation, just as the process of getting into the details. Mr. Stevens mentioned, one thing that's a good example, it cannot have greater square footage, so you can't make it any bigger. May decide to make the square footage of the development smaller, but you can't make it anything bigger. There's other changes that can be done according to what goes on during the process of developing the final development plan, but they have to be minor. And if they're not small changes, then it has to go back, and we have to do this over again. And if it's a big change, then we have to go back and say, "We're going to make a big change, so we've got to do the hearing process and go back to Town Meeting." So that's the process of developing the final development plan. If the final development plan is presented and meets all the approvals of all the different boards and regulations, the building inspector, all those different regulations and requirements, the planning board, if the planning board then accepts the final development plan, then you get to go ahead and build it. And that's the process we're in. So for the first article, we're deleting the one-mile criteria, and we're proposing to add affordable age-restricted, and in this preliminary development plan, there is a proposal, it does include age-restricted, affordable, 10% affordable. So that's a long-winded introduction that probably would have helped at the beginning, but that's what Article 1 is about, and that's sort of the process we're in. So regarding Article 1, other discussion?
Just for people who haven't heard all this before, about the EA zoning bylaw change, it was envisioned long before this project was proposed. It's a change that we think will be good for the town to provide age-restricted housing that is affordable, and that was not in the bylaws before. And also, we thought that it was a good idea not to restrict these types of developments to one, within one mile of Town Center, because in general, our housing production plan and the plans that have been made for housing in the future envision different kinds of age-restricted and affordable housing, projects that could be in different forms and cited in different ways around town, and we don't want to be restricted, but be able to look at projects one by one, as we're doing in Article 2.
That's a great point. What we're really talking about is looking at a site that's been proposed, or is a proposal to develop it as a 40B under the state rules, not the Sherburne rules, but under the state rules with higher density, more units. So this is a plan that allows a developer, in this case, the TRASK company to look to, instead of doing the 88 units of 40B, to do 66 units in an EA, but it requires changing this one-mile requirement. And in return, we get the 10% affordable, which in terms of the 40B, all the development stuff that's happening all over the state, but the development of 40B allows developers to build using state rules rather than local town rules, and in our case, that means this site, but it could mean other sites. So the sooner we get a project in that gets us to safe harbor, meaning we get enough affordable housing units in an annual basis, for one or two years we get protection, and if we get to 10% affordable housing in Sherburne, then we get to have control over the 40B process in town, which means if this site's developed, if we get to safe harbor, that means we have a two-year window, or a one-year window, because it's seven units, this site specifically. If there's enough development where there's enough affordable houses in Sherburne, like 14 units gets us two years. After that, the only way we can control it is by continuing to build seven per year, or to reach 10%. And so this is an example of a project that gets developed where it doesn't set us further back, doesn't, we don't gain ground on that, but we don't get further back. So we're converting a 40B project to a development that has the attributes that we've just discussed, it's fewer sites, it's fewer units, it's tax revenue without any significant increase in the town's operating costs. So that's what this project is about relative to 40Bs. And as Marion said, it points out that if it were anywhere else in town, we'd go through the same, if there's a 40B project of two affordable houses, then this allows us to zone that if it's not within a mile, this Article 1. If it's five or 10, whatever the affordable units are, it allows us to put affordable houses in different parts of town where it would not otherwise be able to if it wasn't within a mile.
I just wanted to make one clarification, it doesn't, as far as, so it's a neutral 10%, and so at the end of the day, we don't gain, but in the short term, we do gain, since it's, the numbers game is based on the 2010 census until we have the 2020 census. So we are adding some affordable units in this, with this development, which is a positive for our town, and it's like every town is facing throughout the Commonwealth trying to play this numbers game, so it's one step forward, two steps back, maybe forward again, but, so it's not a straight answer every time of how are we getting to our 10%, but we are working on that.
Okay, then let's move on to Article 2. So Article 2 is to rezone the parcel at 104 Coolidge to EA with this preliminary development plan for this specific project. Something that needs to be known about a preliminary development plan also is, if the town does approve it, then that's all that can be done on that site. It has to be developed according to that, unless it's a 40B. The only thing that can, it becomes a zone for this specific type, this specific development, that specific preliminary development plan. If somebody said, "I want to change the plan and put in more units," or something, they can't do it, can't make any significant, any big change, unless it goes back to Town Meeting and gets approved again. Yes?
Tom Burns, Olive Street. Just back to the first article, have you sensed any pushback from any quarter in town on the change in the features of EA zoning bylaws?
I think in our, I mean, we've been, we've been meeting with TRASK company a number of times, a number of meetings, and I know they met with conservation, I think you're in the process of other meetings, none that come to mind. Yes?
John, I just want to sort of repeat something that was said. As to the first article, if the goal is to support the housing production plan, and two of the goals of the housing production plan were to regain control for the town of its own lands as they're developed, and another, I am, excuse me, so.
And to provide more diversity.
Thank you, thank you.
And this piece was identified.
And to make a developer think that going to an EA project will actually be good for him, rather than use the 40B, the dreaded 40B with its increased densities, which is so abhorrent to Sherburne. If that is the goal of the EA article change, the warrant article to change the EA zoning, I think this is an example of that article working, that it does tempt a 40B developer to say, as you did, that it would be more profitable for you and less regulatory, to take Sherburne's offer of an EA zone. And as far as Sherburne is concerned, it's better for us, it's more under our control, it's less dense, it's more money for our coffers and less taxes therefore, or less tax increases. So I think the EA has proven by this happening that it's exactly worded correctly, and I hope it does go through Town Meeting quite comfortably.
So Article 2 is to see if the town will vote to grant a preliminary development plan approval pursuant to section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaw, and then to rezone the land at 104 Coolidge, as such the land is more particularly described in the legal descriptions in the map on file with the town clerk to residents EA district, so as to permit the development of newly constructed over 55 housing, as detailed in the preliminary development plan presented at Town Meeting. So that's Article 2. And we've got a checklist of things, and some comments that have been made in previous So, trail connections is something that we'd like to, we've talked about, and the trail connections that we've talked about, we'd like to see as part of the plan, include a trail connection between the EA project and the townland on Rockwood and on Coolidge. The trail connection between the Natick line at Spine Street from North Main along Coolidge Street, in the language that we didn't specify, I guess, before, but talked about in a previous meeting, was, is to specify that it should be in accordance with the current DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation, trail construction methods for a stone dust trail, just trying to come up with some standard. And the trails should be constructed parallel to Coolidge Street on townland and right-of-way, where approval is granted by CMND and Conservation Committee, and on private land where property owner, Conservation and CMND approve. So the idea is to make it a trail along Coolidge Street to connect up to Natick and to connect down to North Main, and then in the project, in this project, to have a trail that will connect this project up to the townland between Rockwood, Peters Hill. Comments?
Yeah, that's a good addition, I think. Are we going to go through the points that need to be?
Yes.
Let's start at the beginning.
Need to be covered?
Yep. So in our checklist, just sequentially, the boundaries and topography, and our comment were that the topo was received on October 30th, but not on those on the November 6th, so they should be. And it says all dated on October 26th and labeled as C1.
John, is there, does this list mean that a vote should not follow until perhaps by tomorrow, these things are prepared, or is it not?
This is real common to sort of go through detail, for instance, the next one's wetlands and ponds and streams, they're not yet confirmed by Conservation Committee, that's a real normal thing.
Okay.
So it just says that, hey, they're defined, they're here, they need to be confirmed, but they don't need to be confirmed for the preliminary development plan.
Ah, okay, so this is more for the final?
Yeah, if there was no mention of wetlands, that would be a problem. They're here, they're discussed, but they're not confirmed by Conservation Committee, that's a normal process that happens during the final development plan process.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And that's true with the other criteria. We can certainly make something contingent, but we're duly noting that it's.
No, I'm not advocating for that, I just wasn't sure, and I thank you for clarifying.
Also, location, the bulk types and architectural character of the typical floor plans, and it's not clear if basements are proposed on the plan, so that should be clarified. And then there's no floor plan for the affordable units, so that needs to be included.
Yep.
Could I ask a question about the floor plan while we're there?
Yep.
I understand the sewage treatment plant will be. I understand the sewage treatment plant will be built under state regulations, and the state has its own definition of how you define bedroom or how you count bedrooms and et cetera. So I'm assuming this is true, but just confirm for me that the way you have calculated the capacity of your sewage treatment plant, which we're not looking at detail in tonight, is according to the state regulations for bedroom count. That is, I see in your floor plan, floor plans, that there are various spaces on the second floor that you recall in previous setting came up as, could this be a bedroom? And I'm wondering how the state handles that.
Well, our anticipation is the state would interpret these as deed restricted 55 or older, therefore they'd add 150 gallon per day requirement. So it wouldn't be a bedroom count as much as it's a deed restricted 55 plus.
150?
150 gallons per day for a, for a deed restriction 55 plus unit. It's a Title V.
Okay, okay, thanks.
It's pretty much the only Title V bedroom exception is 55 plus.
Right, thanks.
Locations designed on the streets, walks and parking, paved areas. The street dimensions, the street dimensions are shown, but there's no walks proposed or shown. And the dimensions of the driveways and parking spaces.
Yeah, there's a walkway shown, but we can give you a typical cross section.
Okay.
Connector throughout the project, out to Gray Lane because there's a sidewalk there. We come out to Coolidge. Would provide connection because this is where the NWRTA is wanting to do their bus turnaround in this parking lot, so.
Okay, can you describe the connection out to Coolidge?
Well, right now, our entire project would have sidewalks. There's existing sidewalks on Meadowbrook, and they come up gray to about here, so we, and I see they're not shown here. The roadway is 24 feet wide, but we would show this sidewalk connecting. We have an interior sidewalk here. We would propose a sidewalk that would connect the two projects with easement. And then the question would be whether we wanted to, we'd have to look at whether it makes sense to use this as a walking trail access. So we put a five foot easement along the back of the property, maybe along the stone wall, or some other connection, maybe using the, the well trail as an access point. But we could provide generic language that there could be access through this parcel from anyone on Meadowbrook or Gray to walk up to this townland here and over to the Peters Hill.
Okay, and I think, again, as we talked earlier, using the road going to the well field was, was acceptable for us.
We just have to make sure we're clear on the state DEP access requirements.
Yep.
We may need to keep that area out of the Zone 1, so we might actually have to put a trail along the top of the property line, which is fine. It's, it's walkable up there, so.
Were you suggesting that the walking path that we have requested towards Spine Street and north, and toward North Main, as far as it could be done, should be part of the preliminary development plan?
Yeah.
That's also.
The detail, I think, can be, it's, it's limited to what can be provided with approvals. So where you don't get approvals, you can't build it.
Probably going to be more verbiage than it is planned.
That's right.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that's okay. Okay, the proposed, we get, so the proposed grading and drainage, we've received those. And utilities are shown. They're, the electric utilities and telecom is underground. And open, and open space. Some is provided on the abutting parcel, which you've shown. And, and so we've, we've got, the green space is provided mostly, that's mostly setback area. Twelve acres of 22, 55 percent open are green, so that's, that's okay. And then you've defined who you are, that's good. The dwelling unit density is three units per acre. Where the maximum is four, so that's good. And you've defined the total floor area, the proposes, the proposed rents and, or sale, or sale prices, and and the distances to amenities. So. That's that, on that list. Other details that mentioned bike racks and, to include bike racks. And for public access, maybe this is on the, on the other site, but a covered drop off or something for town use. There's a drop off location for someone, someone else in town to make use of the, of the bus. And then a, a comment of, of, of somebody that, again, this was mentioned earlier, but to add screening to, to the area shown, and I got a look at it to see if maybe you've done it since we last spoke, but to add screening on the, on the, on the on the, on the eastern end of an abutters property, 112 Coolidge, which is, which is the northwestern corner of your parcel to, to, yeah, right there, so that there should be some screening there if it's.
There will be. We assume, since this is preliminary site plan, we assume that the full site plan will have landscape, cross sections,
Right.
elevations, the whole.
Yeah, I think at this point, we just want to know that there's screening.
Yeah, I'm, I'm committed to that.
Yeah.
So I'm committed to whatever. I have to analyze what's there.
Yeah.
And sort of work backwards.
Right, that's fine. Next thing, and I'm doing all the talking here, but, but I'm used to that. I listen, but whatever. So the, consider, how about the, the entrance? You've got a, what's shown is a, an island down the middle. It's, it's, it's fairly wide, and, and I, this plan has been presented to, it's been copied to the fire department, police department without comment on it as is. But in terms of the, the appearance of the entrance, I wonder if it could be, and I'm trying to imagine it, but if it could be more rural by making it a little bit, maybe not have that island, but, but maybe, maybe, does that leave more room for a more rural type of trail or something?
We're, we're not committed to anything other than as long as fire department, safety is all comfortable with the layouts, we'll, we'll do whatever makes the most sense for, for their benefit and, and for aesthetics and for impact.
Okay, and I know the details come in the final development plan, but.
Yeah, there may be a way to sort of not make it a straight thoroughfare, but to do a curved, sort of a setup with a, with a curve to the right and to the left, which we have no problem. We do have, I think that's close to 200 feet of frontage across the front. So we have more room than it, it sort of looks in the front of that space, so there may be ways to, as long as I'm working with the public safety as we're doing it.
Other comments?
I have a question, not a comment. I understand this, these are not absolutely, you know, as, as it may be built, but in the units that are on the upper right-hand side, where they come closest, I would say to an abutter. Since we're, we're concerned that the abutter be properly screened, you have the 60-foot setback. But each of your buildings has a little bump out going toward the outside that doesn't show up on the floor plan. Is that a patio or a balcony or?
That is a brick patio, which technically is not a structure. So it's not part of the setback requirement, requirement per se.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't, I think more importantly there, because I think those patios are mostly seven or eight feet away, it's going to be taking a good look at the existing vegetation through there. We, we can move the units forward, that's probably not a problem. But I think more importantly is going to be looking at the vegetation. They're at a much higher elevation than I am at that point, so it's going to be positioning a detaining wall, if you will. Right now, we've shown the detaining wall about 30 feet in, along, 30 feet from the property line and 30 feet from the unit, but it may need to sort of meander based upon the tree canopy. So that's something we should sort of dive into on the landscape plan.
Right.
And if we need to, we can pull the units forward, but I think it's, we need to sort of look at what we're affecting, what we're not affecting through there first.
Water well. We've had, we've had an abutter in a previous meeting with concern about his water well. And the response about doing a, a pump test and looking, using the abutters wells to look for influence. So a thought I had was to say if the abutter allows use of their well for monitoring to see if there's influence, to provide a, a five-year warranty that says if they have a problem, if, if there's influence, then you got to do something, we got to do something anyway. If there's not influence, provide a five-year warranty. So it's a limited period of time to say that if they got a well problem after this project starts up, then for five years, they'll do something about it. Just seems like that's kind of in a, a compromise that's in return for cooperating during the drawdown test. You know, their wells, the, the, the abutter that mentioned it, I think, has already said he's got, he's concerned about his well anyway. So it just seems like there's really just two abutters adjacent in, in that area, in the, of the wells, so.
It's certainly something we'll look into. I mean, we could probably negotiate something where if there is an issue, then they can be brought into our system.
Yeah, I don't know what's, I, I don't know, and I don't want to speculate what's the, the, the best solution. If it's just to deepen their well or tie them into your system or whatever, I'd, I'd leave that to some, to whatever makes sense.
That's certainly something, like I said, you're right, we have the two houses at the same plateau we are, but just the two.
Yeah. Other thoughts?
I would just say that before I left my home on 45 Rockwood Street, I had the well tested, and there is up-to-date data on flow, and every possible contaminant was looked for. So that kind of a base is probably helpful for the people next door too.
Yeah.
And, and then you can go from there.
Okay. The next thing is on the, on the language of the warrant article. The current EA bylaw, which I'll open up. Let me find it. I've got the language here. So the, the, the current, the current EA bylaw says adequate methods shall be provided for onsite. Let me read it again. Adequate methods shall be provided on the site for waste disposal and drainage. While this, and while it doesn't necessarily mean onsite, because for instance, Sherburne Meadows is a, is a project also up in that area. But Sherburne Meadows is an over 55 project, and the, the waste disposal is not onsite. The waste disposal is connected to Framingham and their wastewater treatment plant. So, so when we, we've discussed this earlier in previous meetings with the planning board and, and read that the key word adequate methods made sense, but, but, but to ensure the clarity, I'd like to propose an amendment to, to the current bylaw, to, to our current amendment, and I'll pass that out, but it's, here, I just take one and pass it down.
John, did the town council?
Yeah, I just, that's.
Okay.
Town council just, just looked at this and thought it's, it's a good idea. Yeah, you can pass it around. So, so I'm proposing in the, that we sort of take this opportunity.
Maybe give one to.
So it's being passed around. That we take this as an opportunity. The, the, the utility section, that's where I'm.
Which is I in the current.
It's I.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good.
So it's, it's 5.6.5 I, and, and it, and it, and it reads adequate methods shall be provided on, on the site for waste disposal and for surface and subsurface drainage in accordance with the regulations of the Health Department. So I think that using public water and wastewater is a good idea. Wastewater treatment plant and public water, these are good things. They're held to much higher levels of quality control, and on the wastewater side, the effluent is held to a higher quality. So, and they're both regulated by the DEP. So we think these are good things, not just for this project, but for any potential future ones. So, so to ensure that a public water system and/or wastewater treatment plant on, on an abutting site complies with the EA bylaw and gives incentive, actually, to give incentive, that a public water system or, and, and or wastewater treatment plant can be used on an abutting site within the EA law. So we're only talking about EA projects that all have to go to town meeting for approval. So that by making this amendment, it's, it's only for EA and it, and it's only when it's approved by a town meeting. To, to further amend our Article One by, by amending the EA bylaw utility section, that's, that's I currently, but, but it'll become H if Article One passes because Article One will adjust things. So it'll read, and I'll, and I'll read the existing and then with the changes. All electrical, gas, telephone, water distribution and other utility and service lines shall be placed underground in accordance with the regulations of the respective utility companies and the rules and regulations of the Sherburne Planning Board adopted pursuant to Chapter, and this is actually unrelated, it's just we noticed an error. The town council noticed, our current, our current bylaw reads Chapter 40A, which is a zoning bylaw, and it should read Chapter 41, which is a subdivision control law. So this is strict, that's an administrative error, we might as well correct it now. So Section 41, sorry, Chapter 41, Section 81K. Adequate methods shall be provided on the site for waste disposal and for surface and subsurface drainage in accordance with the regulations of the Health Department, and this is the significant amendment. Adding higher levels of treatment and monitoring of domestic water supply and wastewater such as provided by a public water system and/or wastewater treatment plant that are each regulated and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection are encouraged. Therefore, the public water system and wastewater treatment plant facilities may be located off-site if shown as part of a preliminary development plan to the extent that such facilities are allowed or permitted on the off-site parcel. So that's an amendment to the EA section, and it applies only to EA. So it's an amendment to the proposed article.
Proposed Article One.
One.
Article One.
And, uh, the project is proposed Article Two.
Yeah. So i- i- as I say, I think the reason to do this, even though, even though the language, I mean, we've, we, Sherburne Meadows is an example. I think to put this in perspective, it provides an incentive and I think it clarifies any, any question. And, and I, and I think, uh, it, it's an example of a change to the EA zoning which we've, we've made for every EA project we've done. We, we made amendments to Sherburne Meadows, we made amendments, um, to Leland and we made amendments to Abbey Road. So these are all making amendments is, is, uh, this is consistent with that. Neil.
Neil, Neil Kessler, forty-three page, Mark. Just a quick question on that. Is this change going to allow this project to not have to worry about deeding the two acres that hold these public water supply and, and that sort of stuff? So this will allow there to not have to be some transfer of actual property between, between eighty-four Coolidge and one oh four Coolidge? Does that, does it achieve that end? Because otherwise, how would it work?
It, it calls it an off-site parcel.
Yeah.
Does that mean if it's an off-site parcel, that it's another parcel?
Well, then it wouldn't be off-site if it was the same parcel.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It doesn't require it to be part of the, uh, one oh four parcel.
Right, that's what I'm asking. So in the existing regulations, for, if this change weren't to go through or it didn't exist, then the proposal to have the wastewater and the public water supply on eighty-four Coolidge would have to be arranged in some other fashion. Is that, am I understanding that right or am I missing something?
Uh, I think.
As far as, as, as far as Gino was concerned, it was not a requirement for the waste treatment to be part of the EA property itself. It was required to be shown, but not actually part of the same land parcel. So this is belted to suspend.
In the current regulation, it doesn't need to be, to be from anywhere. Is that, am I understanding that right?
That's the, that's the way the Sherburne Meadows was, is an example. Sherburne Meadows is an example where, where it's connected to a wastewater treatment plant, not onsite. Manny.
Well, for one thing, I'm, I'm a little puzzled that you're using the phrase are encouraged. I mean, this is a legal document, what really, there's a latitude in the word encourage that is not particularly legal lease. I mean, you're not really defining anything, that's number one. It's a strange word to have in a law, encourage. And, uh, secondly, what, what really do you have in mind in terms of an off-site water supply, a septic system? I mean, you, in your plan, you have capacity and, uh, at least a preliminary design for sourcing the water and a septic treatment plant, right?
Correct, but they are not on the EA parcel.
Yeah. Um, I think the reason it rea-, it reads encouraged because, because, um, um, we're trying to make this so it applies to this project or some future project where we don't want to mandate it must be a wastewater treatment plant. If it's a small project, um, if it's, if it's, uh, converting a, a single-family house to a two-family house and making them both affordable, um, we want to be able to zone that, that's the one mile thing. But we want to be able to zone that, but we don't want to mandate you got to put in a wastewater treatment plant.
Are you thinking of the, the discussion that's also sort of going on about a public water supply? That this would be attached to that? I mean, is this, or is this totally separate?
The, the in, the intent of the language is to encourage for these types of projects, which are multi-dwelling projects, more dense than the norm for Sherburne, is to encourage a higher level of, um, I mean, our, our standard septics work perfectly adequately for small projects. For larger projects, there's always the concern of, for our water. So the extra safety net of having state monitored and regular maintenance required that comes with a DEP system is, would be the encouraging factor when you have something where units are more dense than we are typically.
Mandate instead of say encourage.
Well.
That sounds more desirable and they say encourage.
Because there might be a small project where we wouldn't want to, that might fall under an EA zoning, which maybe they would then. There might be a small creative project, it might be one duplex, could be a habitat project down the road. And in that case, we wouldn't want to insist that they have a public water supply or a waste treatment facility.
What about threshold above which you acquire it?
Uh, just by, by the way, because we don't have our clerk here, so we're relying on, on the recording. So please make sure to identify yourself, Neil. Uh, Kessler.
Neil Kessler, what about a threshold?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good question, uh, Neil. But, um, the, the, um, I prefer encourage because each project is different. And I think trying to guess what a threshold is on this project, we could probably do that. But on another project with a different number of units or different, uh, topography or different degrees of difficulty or ease in, in the development, that'll affect whether or not you want to mandate a wastewater treatment plant. It gets, it's, I, I'd rather just say encourage and, and enable it, just like we're, we really want to enable, uh, an EA development rather than, as an alternative to a forty B.
Exactly.
But I think trying to put in a, a specific range might be, I, I don't know how to do that and make it, uh, I think make, enabling a wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plants are expensive. So enabling it, um, and then let, let the project figure out what the project will bear. This just says, you, if you can do a, if you can do septic or wastewater, we want to encourage wastewater.
Can I just respond to that? Neil Kessler. The thing that I think I would like to see avoided, I guess, would be the circumstance where the Fields project, for example, where a series of, at, at least originally, a series of private wells were proposed and it was a private water system and it was kept just under the threshold for state to get over into public to, simply to avoid the cost of it. And, and that's fine if the economics dictate that, I, I, I can understand and commiserate with that. But I think what I would like to see avoided is that, or at least maybe, and maybe this is a border health issue, I don't know, I'm just sort of thinking out loud. But just the idea that, you know, that at the point of discharge, that your wastewater not be above drinking water, your nitrate levels in wastewater not be above drinking water standards. Or maybe we can even adopt some sort of requirements, um, that go along with what the state has, I mean, the state, that, that they have for those larger systems when you get over a certain density or a certain threshold for the number of units. Because I think that's, I think we're in danger as a town of not having the kind of protections for these sort of middle ground projects between the really monstrous ones and the, and the small ones that you don't want to be overly burdensome about. But something, because I, encourage is good, right? But it's like a law, you know, Congress passed a law, be encouraged and then nobody ever pays attention to it. So I think you'd want to avoid that and to, to John's point, um, but at the same time, not want to be overly burdensome about it.
Robert.
Robert Johnson, two seven two Western Avenue. Uh, I would like to see it as is with the encouraged there. Uh, I think that water, both, uh, drinking water and wastewater are really more the province of the Board of Health. And I, I think it's good to encourage them in the planning board. But I think that regulating it probably should be more in the hands of the Board of Health.
Um, I, I agree with that comment. I think it does belong in Board of Health and I think Neil would agree as well. But as far as putting in language that's not legal, like, language like encourage, there are lots of places in the bylaw, this is to Lanny's point, where we, uh, describe the intent of the bylaw in, in general terms. And I think this is one of those sites. So I think to use a word like encourage rather than a, a strict legal term is okay here.
I, I will point out that the town council has reviewed this language and, uh, and approved it.
The other intent is this is language for the, the amendments that are being discussed for the first article of restructuring some of the language in the current bylaw are designed to encourage more situations where we are adding the housing that we need without using the forty B process when possible. So we try, want to make it so that it's encouraging and not so restrictive.
John, do you want to recommend?
Yes.
Melina O'Neil, eight one road. I'm just going to switch gears with two completely unrelated questions. So the fifty-five in over just means that one person who's fifty-five needs to live in the dwelling and it doesn't have any technical restrictions about kids?
Correct.
And then the second question is, does the town hire any developers to post a bond in the event that a, a development sort of goes south or for whatever reason, people aren't buying the units and, and the developer sort of was ready to walk away from that? But the town doesn't want to be left with sort of a couple of structures that aren't really inhabited and we've got this thing going on. I don't know how that works. And I don't know if that's, comes in here or at another stage or other than that.
Ben.
I'm not sure how you handled Abbey Road, but was there bond releases and performance bonds for road completion and such?
Uh, not that I know of, no.
Covenant. Is there a recorded covenant?
There is.
Planning board required us to.
A covenant, yeah.
Yeah, the planning board required us to submit a recorded covenant to complete the infrastructure for the project. I assume that they would impose a condition of the grant to the permit as they did Abbey Road.
Right.
To, they, uh, to have a covenant to perform the infrastructure. Uh, the, the subdivision control law has a model in which you needed a covenant, post a bond or post cash. And, uh, we were able to go with covenant, but there are those places that the planning board would have at that time.
Yeah, okay, thank you Jim Murphy. So, so Melina, the answer to, so you, you heard the answer, so a bond or a covenant or it can be part of it and, and will. Yes.
Peggy Holmberg, forty-three Mill Street. I, I might have missed this in the beginning, but where is the water coming from?
Right, right now, as proposed, we have a well field up on the north, sorry, southeast. Here my pointer. Southeast side of the property, up on the top of the hill, we have, um, proposed seven, seven wells, we need about two point five gallons per well. Uh, we have two drilled already, they're in the four to five gallons a minute. We have a, a kind of a large area, that whole top of the hill was going to be dedicated as open space, a zone one protection for those wells. So that's what we're proposing.
So, oh, so it's, 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 it's all going to be wells, so it'll come from the aqueduct that everybody else draws from?
It'll come, yeah, it'll be, it'll, they're bedrock wells, they have a zone one protection, they're, they're permitted through the state. They're a semi-public water supply system, so we actually, it's a state permit, not a local permit.
Yes.
Kate Higrae, forty-nine Rockwood. What is the status of the public water discussion with Natick?
As far as I know, there's been no movement forward. We're prepared to talk about it, but it's a collaboration between both select boards, if you will.
Um, worthy of note is that if, in this preliminary development plan, if Natick water is available, you'd be.
Happy to pay for it, happy to bring it in.
So what are the next steps in getting that conversation moving?
It's hard for me to say because it's political, political conversation. I need permission from both.
Selectmen.
Boards of selectmen. To do it.
Frank.
Just to clarify that, the board of selectmen.
Frank Jenkins.
Frank Jenkins. Voted a week ago last Thursday to send a letter to the board of selectmen in Natick to enter into discussions for an inter-town agreement by a board of officials. Uh, that letter has not yet been sent. The Natick board of selectmen are waiting for it and are talking. And there seems to be, um, interest on their part of working with us, but I can't.
Okay.
Which would mean that the water is becoming out from the well zone here.
Right. And I think we're, it would be coming from off-site, but I think this language addresses it because it too would be a public water system.
Right.
An off-site public water system, so.
Right. Yes, Peggy.
Peggy Holmberg again. Is there some way to, um, sort of anticipate the impact of those extra wells on the abutters?
Uh, I'm not a hydrogeologist and I know it's a very, uh, ina-, inact, uh, not exact science because of bedrock fractures, what's pulling from where. When you do a well field this size, you do have to have a zone one protection. So you, you have to start with a two-hundred-foot radius of zone one and also have a zone two protection. So they can't be located fifty feet from another well. Does that mean they'll interact with ones?
They will, that's for sure.
That's why it's a state permit. We let them, they're the, they're the guideline followers. They create the zone one, they do the drawdown testing with us. They'll, we're not required to monitor neighbor abutters wells, but, but my hydrogeologist makes a suggestion that it's a good practice so that someone can make a claim later on that there's an influence. But, um, we did it at the Fields of Sherburne, they go down there with generators and trailers and park out for twenty-four hours and they measure, um, head pressure, well heights, and they run those things, uh, full bore for twenty, for five days straight, twenty-four hours a day. And that's what would have to happen here before it could be approved.
Marion.
No, I was going to ask Ben to say what he already just said.
Okay. Yes.
Solomon twenty-four Prospect Street. Um, I, I sort of posed this question at the last meeting, but I'm wondering if any more thought has been given to traffic impact on Coolidge and. What, what do we know about that?
We're having the, we, we did a traffic analysis when we submitted the original plan, which was for eighty-eight units, um, of the forty B housing. Now, my understanding in the traffic analysis world, there's no difference between a fifty-five plus town home or an eighty-eight or a for-sale three-bedroom town home. I think we might all agree that there is. But their calculations that they did, uh, on the eighty-eight unit project basically did not change the level of service of any of the interchanges. There's not a safety issue. We have, um, we've got, depending on the speed, this is regulated at thirty-five, but the mean average is forty-one miles an hour, which means our site distance, our ideal site distances are somewhere around three hundred and seventy to three hundred and ninety feet. We have four hundred plus feet on either direction. So from a, from a exit and entrance on my site, there's no issue safety-wise. Of course, they did look at the intersection of Kendall Spine and Coolidge and down at, uh, Coolidge and South Main. And they did a no build condition and a build condition, if you will. And there is no, they're, if I recall, they're both, um, both those intersections for leaving Coolidge, taking a left on Kendall is a level C out of A through F. But in two thousand and twenty-one, under the build condition, there's no change in the level of service from where it is, where it would be under normal conditions. What it basically means is that your delay on turning left onto Kendall Avenue from Coolidge will go from forty seconds at your morning peak to forty-three seconds. And they also did the, the turning right onto North Main Street from Coolidge would go from thirty. would go from thirty-six seconds to forty-one seconds, but they're both maintaining their level of service. Um, one is a E and one, they're both E intersections, so they're not great intersections by any stretch of the imagination, and, but they're not gonna be substantially worse from a build condition or a no-build condition of our project, and that was based upon eighty-eight units. Presumably, this would be sixty-seven and a lot less.
Mark Brown, thirty-three Green Lane, what about, uh, when you include the eighty-eight units for the, the-
Uh, we have not done that analysis yet, that'll have to get brought in and layered on top of it. Um, they did do a two-and-a-half percent per year traffic increase under a build condition, which I've been told sort of factors that in, but I'll have them, they're running it directly for the eighty-eight rental, so.
Um, yes?
Cheryl Mitchell, one twenty-one Coolidge Street, um, I'm not sure where you get the thirty-five or forty mile an hour as you're heading west toward Spine Street on Coolidge Street. Before you get to the aqueduct, it drops to twenty miles an hour. And as you come east on Coolidge Street, as soon as you turn off the Spine Street, it's twenty miles an hour and you don't get another sign until you get through the curves, raising it to thirty-five. So, it's not true that it's thirty-five miles an hour in there, it's twenty. The sad part is that no one ever goes twenty miles an hour here. Uh, I had an accident there last night. It, uh, we have cars in our front yard as a result of accidents and metal road injuries. So, it is not a safe place right now to block the cars. That's, you know, that's all I can say, it's not, those curves are not safe and the speed limit coming from Spine Street to the curb is never enforced.
So, uh, does your traffic study, uh, talk about the, when you mentioned the speeds, is that the measured speeds or is that the regulated?
Um, there, what they did is they did a posted speed in, at our entrance, if you will. Um, and the posted speed at our entrance was, is thirty-five. The mean is thirty-eight and the eighty-fifth percentile is forty-one, uh, from their actual, from their data that they gathered directly at our entrance. So, I'm presuming our entrance is thirty-five. I don't know where the transition is between twenty and thirty-five, but it, would it be up in here?
I am looking because I took pictures of the speed limit signs after my accident and I am sure that heading towards Speed Street, the first twenty mile an hour sign is before the aqueduct.
So-
So, somewhere in here it goes to twenty, but it may, that may be the breakpoint.
Right.
Right there where it goes to twenty, so, I'm assuming my traffic engineers knew which zone they were in, so they're saying it's thirty-five right there. But it might switch to twenty right in here.
And I don't know where it changes going east.
I think it would have to be the same.
No, I don't think so.
No, it's, no, I don't think-
Oh, it's not, okay.
Um.
Doesn't it come to the left through the curbs?
Sorry, I didn't catch that.
I don't think it picks up and you come around the curbs, you come past the farm.
Can you identify yourself?
Dr. Gray, Rock Rock. You come past the farm, you go through that little meandering piece past the farm, then it picks up after that. No one evades it, but the speed limit is, uh, really leveled that far. I don't know what your traffic engineers are, but they gotta go back and look, if you're saying the average speed is forty for a traffic study, where the average, that's maybe the average actual speed? But if you do a traffic study, then you do it theoretically? Composed it and, uh, not actual?
It's, they did actual.
I think-
Yeah, actual is one thing, but if you're doing a traffic study, you're supposed to do it to the, to the speed limit, I believe.
I think you're supposed to, to, we need to-
Because if, let's just say theoretically, the police decide to start forcing because there's a lot more traffic coming in and out of there and they know they're older people, so they're gonna be more concerned, I know how these police think in this town about those kind of things. And, you know, that's just my hypothesis, but if they were to actually crack down on that corner, the speed limits will significantly slow, and so your traffic study has to account for the legal law, not, not the actual.
Right, but we have to, we, for our sightline to meet the ash-toe minimum requirements, we have to take the available, this is more the sightline issue than it is the level of intersection issue, so we cannot, as much as I'd love to work off a twenty mile an hour because then my sightlines go from four hundred feet down to two hundred and fifty feet, we have to assume thirty-five miles an hour, and then they also have to assume no one goes thirty-five miles an hour, everyone goes forty-one, and if everyone's going forty-one, what is our safe sightline? That's where the three-ninety and the three, the looking north, three-ninety, looking south, three-thirty-five comes from.
So, you really have two issues then, you have sightline, but then you actually have congestion, which will pile up if you were doing it under theoretical. Conceivably, it should be more congestion at Coolidge and Speed, and it should be, it should be more, it should be favorable to you coming out of there to make a left. So, someone, if they were actually going the speed limit, you should be going out of your sight, you go left easier than if you're going forty miles an hour.
I think I know what you're telling me, but I'm not sure, I'm-
But if you have a slower speed limit, you're gonna get more congestion.
Well, actually, I have less congestion.
I don't think so, because now cars are all slowing down and they, they're gonna be pronged and, and maybe I'll be pronged.
I don't think so, I think i- if, if the speed limit is less, then it's easier for my folks to pull in and out. Uh, I don't know what that does for the delay on the intersections, but presumably it wouldn't, uh, change it much, they're the same cars, they're just getting there at a different time.
Yeah, I, I think that's correct, I think that's correct. Uh, uh, Carol Lynn Lanning?
Um, I found the pictures I took after the accident, and it looks like heading towards Spine Street, the first twenty mile an hour sign is just before the aqueduct.
All right, that makes sense.
There's the aqueduct, so it's probably right there.
I saw that picture and then the twenty-
Cause this is the entrance to the farm, right here.
To the farm?
That's the main parking lot right there.
So, you're gonna have people coming in across from where the traffic from the farms?
Which is actually, in traffic standards, better, because if you're offset, the farther offset you are, you have the risk of two left-hand turns happening simultaneous and not getting out of, not seeing each other, they're looking at the road, not across the way, so. The more aligned you can make the entrances, the better.
Okay, Lanning?
Yeah, Lanny Rubin, twenty-six Elliot Street, could you clarify what the status of the forty-B proposal actually is?
The forty-B proposal is, um, uh, we submitted it about a year ago, it was, um, initially deemed a large project status because of the other piece, we withdrew this application, um, and resubmitted this application, and if I recall, we, uh, we felt that the public hearing was not opened in time granting us constructive approval. So, we are under the assumption that we were granted constructive approval of the comprehensive permit, and we filed that at Housing Appeals Court, and it's been there nine, ten, eleven months right now. So, we're waiting for a ruling from Housing Appeals.
Do you have any instinct to-
None.
Do the forty-B though?
None, I, I, I've talked to my attorney, he, he thought he'd hear by now, he has no whispers, no nothing.
Neil?
If I have a series of comments-
Neil Kessler?
If I have a series of comments, questions, should I come up there and, can I address them?
Yeah.
Just sort of general questions, comments, great. A few.
Um. I need glasses now. So, I guess I just wanted to, there's been a lot of talk tonight just about the positives of the project, and I think that they're legitimate advantages, um, all of the pros that have been listed are things that you've discussed before at other hearings, um, the Housing Partnership Committee's also discussed, but I wanted to point out, um, when somebody asked if there'd been any sort of negative feedback about the project, I wouldn't call this negative, but I would like to report that the Housing Partnership Committee split three to three for those folks that support the project as proposed and for those who don't, so, um, in terms of how the Housing Partnership sees it as fitting in-
Actually, it's not, we didn't get a finished official vote, a straw poll vote, it wasn't an official vote.
Okay, so informally, um-
Are we taking a vote tonight?
Uh, at, at the close of hearing, we were, we will take a-
We will, okay, that's, I did not know that. Um, a straw poll revealed that we were split for and against it. Um, regardless of whether we voted formally or not, there were some concerns expressed, um, and so I just wanted to register those on the record as well. So, and I guess the first one for me, both sitting on the Housing Partnership and also just as a, as a citizen of the town, was that while it does mesh with certain goals in the Housing Production Plan, it actually, uh, runs counter to several of them. Um, and so it's not a slam dunk that this is, uh, the best project for this site, and I understand that some folks are thinking about it in a sense that it's either this or an eighty-eight unit forty-B project, um, but that project has not been approved, so that's not true. And while the, uh, forty-B laws certainly are set up in a way to encourage the production of affordable housing, um, it doesn't mean that we don't have other options potentially for the town to, uh, look at and try to work with the developer on. So, I just wanted to say that, um, I'm gonna, excuse me. Um, so I just sort of reject that sort of idea that we are either or. And one question I just wanted to ask the planning board is, um, have you ever explored with the developer in your discussion something significantly smaller on this site? Something like half the size?
Um, well, it's been mentioned, uh, I'll say that there's incentive, uh, for this project because it's smaller than the proposed forty-B, but also because it generates, uh, tax revenue for the town and provides a larger number of housing options, so there's incentive for this size. Um, so, um, I can say for myself, I have, I haven't pushed for that.
Okay, um, when you say a larger number of housing options, what do you mean, just more units?
Yeah, of, and, and of the range that are there.
Okay, um, another question for you is, in requiring ten percent as part of the EA zoning, or the bylaw change, I guess it is, if I'm getting my terminology right, um, have you ever thought about asking for more than ten percent, because ten percent, while it doesn't, uh, it's, it's, it's SHI neutral essentially, right, so it doesn't add to your affordable housing stocks in terms of hitting your ten percent number, but it doesn't sort of get you further away, and I'm just curious if you and the planning board had discussed any of that?
Um, same thing, we, we, we have discussed it, but the, the, the more affordable, uh, the, the less incentive. Where we've got a, a cluster zoning, a density zoning alternative that's never been used. So, we think in terms of converting an E, a, a forty-B project to an EA project, ten percent's a good incentive.
Okay, um, and I ju, I also wanted to, to that point, um, somebody earlier had said that, that this project gets us closer somehow to affordable housing, it doesn't. I mean, or, or there was this, at least a suggestion, this was a wonderful idea given affordable housing. This actually, this project doesn't have much to do with affordable housing, other than it's affordable neutral, right? It just, it's got seven units that are affordable, therefore it won't add to the current dilemma we're in, which is we're not at ten percent, and when you get to twenty-twenty, I suppose you'll have something to deal with once the census comes in. Um, and then I guess the last thing, um, I just wanted to say was just point out some specific things out of the Housing Production Plan that I think that this project does not do. Um, although it gives, it, it has the potential to give you some local control, um, in terms of things like minimizing adverse impacts, I don't think it does that. It's better than a forty, an eighty-eight unit forty-B project, um, but the, again, that's not been permitted, and so that, to me, it's not an either-or scenario. Um, and a project of sixty-seven units is a lot, it's big, uh, especially for our town. Um, and especially if you're gonna add eighty-eight unit project over on eighty-four Coolidge Street eventually, you're talking about adding more than ten percent of the actual current housing stocks to new housing stocks within a three-year period, which is, this, forgetting about the school-aged children, um, it's, there's pressure on the infrastructure there, there just is, traffic, um, and just all-town resources. Um, another part of one of the goals in the Housing Production Plan is to increment, incrementally achieve the state's ten percent goal, and if we go forward with the eighty-four Coolidge Street project and eighty-eight units there, you're, you know, we talked about this before, you're, it's a ripping off the Band-Aid kind of situation, right? It gets you pretty close to ten percent right away, but that's not incremental, and that was specifically put in the goals, um, based on town feedback from people that, by and large, not everybody, but wanted, um, wanted to do it slowly over time, and have the, sort of the safe harbor be the way we obtain local control versus getting to ten percent, so. Um, and then, goal two is increase appropriately scaled housing options, I'm not sure this does that because it's a pretty dense and pretty large project relative to the size of the town. Um, and then goal three is ensuring the residential development respects semi-rural character and environmental health. Those are the sort of the three goals in the Housing Production Plan, and I'm not sure this project meets that either. I think you can put conditions in that make it better, um, and sort of minimize those impacts, but I just, I, the thing is, is that I went back and forth on this project a bunch, but I think that there's enough significant concerns that it wa, I, I would just like to see something that takes the pressure off wetlands, that takes the pressure off water supply, if they don't get Natick water, you have the general chemical sort of concerns, and if it's a public water supply they're monitoring, I know, but fixing something after you've built it is a lot harder to do than sort of permitting it in the right way. So, I just wanna sort of register these concerns and see if there's some way, either by reducing project size significantly or something, but if there's some way within this permitting process, we can do it, um, so that it reduces the impact on the town, I just would encourage the planning board to do it, that's all, so.
Thank you, Neil, your concerns are noted, and yes, it is true, we've had many discussions as part of the Housing Partnership trying to figure out where this project does fit with the Housing Production Plan, and there are some, we have disagreements on how it fits. Um, I, so as far as size, it has been noted that the size of these, this current EA project is as large as it is because it was felt that there was a need for revenue for the town. So, there was not a strong incentive to make it much less than the sixty units of market rate housing because it was felt that the revenue was needed to support everybody's tax base. The, um, as far as environmental impact, it has a significantly less environmental impact than the proposed eighty-eight unit development. Granted, that development has not been, uh, finalized, it has not been, the comprehensive permit has not been, uh, granted by ZBA that still is out there and remains to be seen, however, the nature of the path of forty-B projects throughout the Commonwealth in the last couple of years has not been favorable towards a decision that nothing would happen, that's not most likely going to be what happens. It could, supposing the town did not grant the EA zoning, then a forty-B project will likely go on that, on that land, it may not be eighty-eight units, but it's not likely to be significantly less. It, um, and at the end of the day, it is a forty-B project, it doesn't fall within our zoning, uh, bylaws, it doesn't, uh, go before our various local town boards, and therefore we don't have the measure of control that we seek that we asked for in our Housing Production Plan to try and gain some control over fortyBs by having a part at the table to make sure that, to the best of the ability, we can shape our project. So, in this case, I don't know if you've, uh, have a slide showing what the eighty-eight units would do with the open space and the wetlands, but there's a, this, the EA zoned project is a better situation than the proposed forty-B. Granted, there's a lot of people who would like to not have any development, and that's not an option.
It's actually worse, though, for affordable housing than the forty-B option.
It-
It is, I mean, it's twenty-two, the, the, the original Coolidge Crossing would be twenty-two affordable units.
And, and that's where it's been extremely complicated to talk about how this does get us to, there's been this talk of how this does get us to our ten percent, and that ten percent only comes into play with the other project, which is a forty-B project, and therefore it's not something that the town is being asked to vote on, but it's the project at eighty-four Coolidge Street, which it's been, when we looked at the numbers game- which it's been, when we looked at the numbers game, and we've looked at how any one town anywhere is able to ever conceivably hit ten percent, the only way is through the incentivized rental options. So the state has incentivized rental options, it's decided that the Commonwealth needs to have more rental options. And therefore, when a rental unit is built, if twenty-five percent of a rental building is affordable, every single unit in that building counts, even though seventy-five percent are market rate. So that's, and it takes up a lot less environmental impact to have a building of apartments versus eighty-eight individual buildings.
Frank.
Neil raises an interesting question about the, the impact and the rate of growth of these projects will, if this particular project is being proposed, will have, how long in time would, would this be built out? Is it five years or three years?
I would say that, yeah, I mean, to, to answer some of Neil's concerns is, is that this housing stock is the housing stock, it's the one, two, three types of housing stock you don't have in town. You don't have rentals, you don't have one-bedrooms, you don't have handicap accessibles, you don't have elevators. So we are actually going to the market that doesn't come to Sherburne right now. And there is, yes, there's Abbey Road, but there isn't a whole lot of senior living options. So, I see this as, as the project, we, we've always considered it one larger project. We're hitting two different markets, we're hitting a rental market, which is a quick market. So that's, can you get the building built in twelve months, you'll have it leased up in seven to eight months after that. This one, if the market stays what it is today, is probably an absorption of one and a half to two units a month. So that's potentially thirty months of selling, could be better, could be worse. I don't think it's going to be a torn-up crazy site. You're gonna have to have a working septic system, you're gonna have to have a working well field before the first person moves in.
You're saying it's about a three to four-year period?
Permitting initial build-out, you better assume five years from today would be your best case.
John?
Yes?
If no one else wants to speak right now, I'd like to just discuss for a moment with Neil the, the preference for reaching ten percent incrementally over time. That I know you prefer, and many people, that sounded good to many people. And I have to say, it sounded good to me when we first started figuring out, you know, how we were going to deal with our state mandate for affordable housing. But over time, I've considered that environmentally, which is my major concern, the, if we can get close to ten percent with a rental project that we haven't been talking about up to now, but now we are talking about it because it's actually part of the picture of this. The eighty-eight unit rental project next to this project, that would be likely, we've been assured, would go ahead if the EA project is approved, is a very good option for moving to ten percent. The incremental option has costs that are kind of unintended hidden costs that I've come to realize more over time. Mainly, as we approach incrementally by doing lots of smaller projects, that each of which has twenty-five percent affordable, it will take us a lot longer to get there. And to get there, a lot of smaller projects will be built in town. And the kinds of properties that are vulnerable to that kind of project and very attractive to a forty B developer, not necessarily Ben, but one that's focused on getting the most out of the forty B law, are some of the most beautiful properties around town. Some of the large properties are vulnerable to development. And as long as we are not anywhere near ten percent or moving incrementally, there may be years when we miss that ten percent. Those years may come up soon, and they may come up often. When we miss, I'm sorry, the, the minimum addition that we need to stay in safe harbor. Then, the result could be, over time, the development with forty Bs over which we have no environmental control, the development of many large properties around town over time, that in the end will cause a loss of more open space and more environmental damage in total than this rental unit.
Can I just speak to what you've just said? I think that the way you're portraying it is a little bit more dire than I would think about it, only because if the town puts itself in control, which is honestly the big if, it's not just a big if. It's the big if because, speak up a little bit, sorry. I was saying, if the town puts itself in a position of control by reaching safe harbor and is diligent about not lapsing out of it, there's no project that they, the ZBA could reject every single project that came up in a place that they didn't want it. So, the beautiful properties could be protected. But it requires an if, and it requires a diligence on the part of the town. And I've said this in private, and I'll say it in public, which is, if the town has no stomach for taking the initiative to build forty B housing or affordable housing in this town slowly, and even in one place over a long period of time, if that's a solution, then, then whatever, you throw up your hands and, and, and meet your fate with whatever developer comes down the pipe, I just, I think I'm a little bit disappointed that that hasn't even been broached. It's just, here's a big project, it cures some of our ills, so let's embrace it. And I, I just, I think for me, I, I think that to have pushed back against this project as dense as it is, to try to significantly reduce its size while allowing Trask to make money, because they've built smaller projects, they're making money, or they're at least trying to, at the Fields, for example, I just think was a, is a worthwhile endeavor. The town has cards that they hold in any negotiation, and I just don't know that they've exercised their leverage in any particular fashion that I can see.
Neil, I'm gonna-
Yeah.
Ask you to-
Sure, thank you.
We're gonna let some other people talk, I think Frank and then Mike.
Actually, could I just make one comment to the smaller project? The, when we did do, the Housing Partnership hosted the forum last March, and a lot of times, the number of seven units needed each year, we needed to add seven SHI units each year. And that sounded doable, and then you start really digging into what does that mean? Well, it's really gonna be hard to find a developer who's gonna build you a seven unit. Every year, we have to build seven-unit rental projects, so think about what that would look like, and where would those seven-unit rental projects go every year that you would need to add up to? I think it was projected out to the year twenty thirty-two, that every year until twenty thirty-two, we're adding a seven-unit rental house. Or if it's a ownership project, that means putting in a development of twenty-eight units every, every year. So do we wanna add twenty-eight building developments every year in our town for the next-
It sounds better, I don't think.
Sorry, let's, I'm, Frank Jenkins and then Michael Lee.
I just have a question very specific to what you said. So that's fifteen years that we'd have to execute consistently for a twelve-year, I mean, how many, how many years of, of the minimum of seven does it take before we hit our ten percent?
Well, I can, I think I, maybe the way to answer that is, to stay in safe harbor, we have to build, right now, based on our current census, seven units per year. When the next census comes along and is accepted, which is probably, it comes, it's twenty twenty, and it takes a year or so or two for it to be accepted, then our number might go to eight. And, and so it goes on forever, depending on the, what type of development, as Eddie May said.
But how many years right now, just under existing?
I think your projection would go up to twenty thirty-two.
Twenty thirty-two.
So that's fifteen years, finding fifteen years' worth of volunteers on all of these different committees to consistently execute and not miss. Because the minute we miss-
Right.
Then the window opens again, right?
Correct. Frank?
And then, then can you pick up on what Mike is just saying, because it ties it in? Fifteen years, how many projects would you pick? Fifteen?
Yeah.
Where would they be? What's, okay, and what I'm getting at Marion's point, there's some beautiful land in town we'd like to keep from being developed. But that land is probably gonna be developed if we go through forty Bs to get to our, our ten percent.
Mark and then, and then Michael.
I just, I wanted to make a point about, it's kind of a safe harbor analysis, and that is, you know, if we do in fact get a large project, you know, the rental, which is, will get us very, you know, much closer to ten percent with the eighty-eight rental projects and affordable development. Once twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one come along, if we are one house, one house shy of the SHI, we, we are vulnerable to another eighty-eight unit project.
You get two years, but-
So, I don't know when this is gonna get built, I'm just saying whenever twenty twenty-one comes along. So, it's important to stay in safe harbor. It's important to stay in safe harbor early in the twenty twenties because of this issue. I mean, the idea that this is somehow the, the last big project that Sherburne is ever gonna see because we're, because we're close to ten percent is incorrect. This is not the last big project that Sherburne is going to see, there will be more big projects coming.
Could I respond to that just quickly? Uh, it, you're right, it's not the last big project because we wouldn't actually be at ten percent. And even if we were, you know, we may fall under ten percent. But it's a choice between being able to add one or two more projects to stay over ten percent and fifteen more projects to do it incrementally, at least that's how I see it.
You know, the, the hypo, trying to speculate, is it, if we, if we're close to ten percent, is it going to be, are we gonna lose that window and, and be vulnerable? Well, there's two-year, two-year window with a large num, a large project.
Right.
But then, but then it's, well, what, what next? And if we're, we, we could well decide, the best approach to, to proceed is to just stay in safe harbor with a series of small projects, or we could well decide one more larger project, which wouldn't have to be as large as the first one, kind of.
I'm suggesting that we-
But we have those options, whatever it is, we're gonna have to make those decisions between now and then. We can speculate all night on different scenarios, and believe me, I've done that.
I'm just suggesting that we really need to do both. We can't, we can't rely on a large project unless, because it's not, it's not gonna hold us for very long.
Right.
Right, and that was, that was why our Housing Partnership Committee is such a great committee, because we have different views, but we also worked well, and we had a lot of great creative ideas. And the hope would be that we would get to a point, right now, we are under the gun, and this project would give us the breathing space to then use some of that, those creative ideas to figure out how do we eke that extra little bit without, you know, how do we do it in a way that does benefit Sherburne, and we add the units and keep our ten percent? So I look forward to continuing to work together.
Grace.
Am I correct in thinking that if we are in safe harbor and do a, is, it's a lip?
Yeah.
Of approach a developer to do a friendly forty B, we could bring ourselves home. And because we were in safe harbor, there could be a, an honest compromise as to what the project is.
Correct.
So that getting close and getting into safe harbor is a useful exercise, if you keep thinking about it. But thinking that you can persist over fifteen or twenty years as a veteran with many scars of Sherburne, that isn't going to happen. I hate to be pessimistic. Yes. That's enough.
Carol, and then Michael.
Can I have a follow-up about the Housing Partnership discussion? But if we go ahead with this, and we're buying ourselves some time with the rental units, would the town ever consider doing another Woodhaven kind of project in which the town could own rental units and run, whether it's for seniors or whatever, to do a town-owned thing, which to me would-
That could be what happens.
That's a very realistic scenario. There's a waiting list on Woodhaven lot of thirty people. And I could fill that gap.
Right, yep.
I know there had been a couple comments that I've heard about this project. In general, the location, a lot of people can attest that the location is minimally invasive compared to some other locations, but it does affect some of our neighbors. And so, to the degree that we can acknowledge that, we do. And especially the rental project, we are aware that it is the most kind of impactful on the one and butler at eighty-six Coolidge, the Paddock family. So I know Ada's here tonight, and I don't know if you had something you wish to say tonight?
I did, I, my husband has prepared a statement for me.
Do you want it to come up?
Good evening, Ada Paddock, eighty-six Coolidge. We live at eighty-six Coolidge, which is abutting both projects, the one that we're talking about tonight, which is Meadowbrook, and the eighty-four Coolidge project, which would have the affordable housing project. While we understand the Planning Board's position in trying to achieve the ten percent threshold for affordable units, we have serious concerns about the impacts to our quality of life, the safety and well-being of our family, as well as the potential negative economic impacts to our largest investment, which is our property. I think I'm speaking on behalf of not just my family, but everybody on Coolidge, all the product, projects, all the other streets that are being affected. If we, these projects go as approved, we are going from two neighbors to a hundred and fifty plus. Furthermore, as proposed, the sewer treatment facility is directly adjacent to our backyard, not only destroying our view and having a potential to impact the integrity of our well. Our property would be surrounded by high-density development. This is not something we came to Sherburne for, and I don't think anybody in this town would disagree with me there. We are collateral damage in the Sherburne's inability to satisfy the requirements of the state's affordable housing law. And it has consumed the better part of the last year. It doesn't appear that there's a clear end in sight. We have had discussions with the developer about potentially purchasing our property, but there is no formal offer in hand, and we really don't have any other alternatives. We are forced to remain in limbo and watch the process unfold from the sidelines. We ask that the leadership and the voters in Sherburne, please consider that a small minority of people are bearing the brunt of the impacts as the town pushes forward with the late and reactive, rather than proactive solution to the affordable housing situation. We just ask that, when the town goes to vote, and when this, you know, moves forward, that we please think about us and think about the other neighbors on this street. And hopefully, we can come to something that has a minimum impact. We are bearing the brunt of this project, it's all gonna be around us, and it's gonna be quick. So, just, you know, implore you to think about us, hopefully, down the line.
Thank you. Anybody else? Michael?
Michael Lee, twenty-eighth Wildwood Drive. My colleagues were showing up late, I would have a regional school committee, or a school committee that-
Michael?
My understanding is that the, what's in front of the table right now is, is really the choice of what options we have for the property at one oh- the choice of what options we have for the property at one oh-two Coolidge, which is eighty-eight, or one oh-four. Eighty-eight units, three-bedroom, townhouses for sale, not age-restricted versus the sixty-six units, um, oriented towards people over fifty-five and age-restricted. And no single project in town is going to solve all of our problems or avoid all of the negative impacts that we now face with light of the desperate situation we are with our affordable housing mandate. We have not done anything for forty-nine years or forty-eight years. Things are coming to us without, beyond our control at this point. But to this project, I look at the huge impact eighty-eight units would have where we don't have a really strong viewpoint of how many school-aged children it could bring versus the free and clear revenue this will generate for the town. And we have budget constraints that are going to impact our schools, that are impacting our other services right now. And so, I really think that this is one piece of the puzzle. Some type of rental project is another component, and then we still have more work to do. I understand that, and other neighborhoods will need to start to bear the burden. Um, but I look at, you know, the choices we made five years ago not to move forward on the project on Maple Street, and I see that as a ninety-acre property that could become a forty-B time bomb as well. And on ninety acres, God knows how large a project could be proposed, and there'd be even more collateral damage. And again, I feel very empathetic for this, your situation. My neighbors were looking at that and they wouldn't even accept the over fifty-five option for ninety Maple, which would have disturbed only thirty acres and put sixty into permanent conservancy. So, we need to start to move quickly on a lot of different things, the financial impacts for the town and the development. And I just see this as a huge step forward in building a relationship with a developer, which will never be warm and fuzzy, but at least cordial and hopefully cooperative. And that, I think, would, I'd hope, would build momentum towards the right type of rental project at eighty-eight. And us being creative at minimizing as many of the impacts to abutters.
Great, thank you. Uh, Libby?
Um, hi, I have a question. Libby Yan, sixteen, one sixteen Maple Street. I have a question for, um, Mr. Stevens. Why are the affordable units proposed in the EA development, um, half the size of the, um, other units, the, um, single-family and duplex? And why are they all congregated in one spot, segregated in one spot? And can that be changed?
We took a look at the, there is, in, in most of the fifty-five or older projects in this general area, there, um, there's no affordability requirement. It's just an underwriting zoning bylaw. Um, there is generally a problem with trying to sell fifty-five or elders, trying to find qualified buyers, um, for an affordable unit. Because those folks who want to maintain a larger unit aren't necessarily financially, they're financially too healthy to qualify. Um, we did hear about the backlog at Woodhaven. I've heard comments from folks whose parents are trying to get into Woodhaven or would like to get in or would like a housing option. Um, so economically, it made sense for us to listen to the planning board's concern about staying even with S H I units. Um, so we said, all right, if there's any way we can bring in ten percent affordable, that means we're losing six or seven market units. But if we're creating smaller units, obviously less expensive units, but maybe they fit the profile of what we're really trying to achieve with parents of residence, um, folks who, uh, single folks who need a place and are, or don't want a big home. Um, so selfishly, we went that direction.
And from a planning board's perspective, we've been encouraging that the, that we find a mechanism for making those seven S H I units be rented rather than a homeownership, since the process for S H I qualification is easier from a rental standpoint. It's income-based rather than asset-based. So, for an in-town senior to qualify, there's a chance that they would qualify for a rental, um, unit, S H I unit, whereas there would not be any chance for any senior in our town to qualify for an, an ownership rental, I mean, an ownership S H I unit.
That's a big point.
Marion?
If I could, uh, in response to Libby's comment, uh, I'd like to add to her question, actually. Uh, I was struck that they're clustered in one spot and that, uh, there's one building of five units and one building of two units, and I didn't quite see the reasoning behind that sort of, you know, dispersion. Uh, so, I would like to hear a little more about whether there might be a creative way to integrate those units, uh, the affordable buildings a little more within the community.
We're, we're certainly open to that. We, quite honestly, this is a preliminary plan. We had to find these locations, so we found them, the locations. They, they may not be ideal, um, but we're hoping when we start bringing all the other influences, offsets to neighbors, um, view vistas and everything else, then maybe we will slide these around. I don't think their size would change, but their configuration and their location might change on the site. But that's something I thought would be handled through the site plan, with the, with the planning board.
Right. So, so just to clarify, the, the, uh, separation of the, uh, into two buildings, five units and two units, was mainly dictated by where they were going on the site?
Correct. Yeah. So, it could be two, two and one, it could be three and two, it could, um, how, that's not a, we were working with the grades of the land, so we know functionally this works. There's a lot more that has to go into this plan, and it may mean those get moved around a little bit.
Are you thinking in terms of having an elevator for handicap-accessible rentals, which is what you were talking about?
No, these rentals are all at grade. So, basically...
All at, even the five would be at grade?
Even the five would be at grade, where you'd have ramps, um, so they'll, they'd be sort of a common porch with a ramp on one side with a couple of doors, so that the handicap units would all, single-level living...
Okay. I was thinking perhaps that's why you had grouped them, but you're saying you don't need to?
No, they're single-level, so it makes sense with everything else being one and a half to two stories to sort of have a lower and an upper, but we have to work with the land grades and so on and so forth, so...
Anything else? Uh, Jim?
Uh, Jim Murphy, forty-four Better Hill Road. Just following up on this latest strain of conversation. It seems to me that you should really consider in your proposed Article One and the new Affordable Age Restricted, particularly if it's going to be applicable to future projects as well as this one, of inserting the type of language that you typically find in, uh, uh, LIP programs or any of the other affordable housing programs. And for that, what I would mean is, so when it says, uh, "And a minimum of ten percent of the units within the entire development shall be restricted to occupancy by persons eligible for lower moderate income housing as defined in seven sixty C M R fifty-six", it should then say, "And will be comparable in size and bedroom count to the market units and shall be interspersed throughout the development." I think that's really something that you should have for projects of this size. If in fact, uh, the, the, uh, planning board thinks it wants to have greater flexibility because of something that's fully accessible as a handicap unit, then perhaps you want to build in that the planning board would have the power to waive that requirement so long as a unit being offered is handicapped. Because right now, all they could do is, we could just have twenty-one hundred square-foot units, market, and nine hundred is what they are, that are one bedrooms, not handicapped, anyplace, all grouped together on the site. I, I really don't think that's the Affordable Age Restricted that you want. So, I, I really think that you should kind of take John's lead on making amendments as necessary now to that section. I'd also point out that I think the proper citation, every time you have seven sixty or seventy-sixty C M R fifty-six point oh-two, and you have the older reference, uh, in five point six point eight to the superseded seven sixty C M R forty-five point oh-oh, which is all, should be all corrected. So, if you're going to correct them, you should correct all your seven sixty references to fifty-six point oh-two instead of the old forty-five or forty-five point oh-two.
I'm, I'm not sure if I agree with the, the, having it be the exact same language as you'd find in a...
I didn't say exactly. That's why I used kind of one of the encouraging type language. I used comparable instead of exact the same size. I said comparable in size and bedroom count to the market units and interspersed throughout the development. Really, you know, it's just really kind of a feel. It's not like, you know, you can put all seven in one place, so you have, I think somebody used, it's almost like, uh, it's such an apt word, segregated. I mean, why would you want to have a segregated part of your project that you're, you're trying to, you know, negotiate? So, I, I just think it's a little nudge on this to help this project do what the title of this new section is, Affordable Age Restricted. If you really mean Affordable Age Restricted, that's going to be universal for this project and other projects, then I think you should really think about putting those elements within it, which are consistent with the way in which things are done in other places. And I guess the other thing I would just tell you, uh, the other theme that was going through. Currently, the town of Medfield has a pretty active LIP program that it's using to meet its safe harbor requirements, and, uh, the town should think about whether or not it can use the same type of models that Medfield is using right now to do that. Medfield was threatened with a massive, uh, project, and it quickly adopted a production plan, and then it implemented a series of combinations of projects that it could see that were independent forty-B types, and then it also encouraged LIP projects. Uh, the LIP projects, uh, that have been approved in Medfield, they're rentals. There's two affordables, there's six markets, that gives them a cap, each of those projects.
I think it should be noted in Medfield though, that there was a state that turned down the commercial application for the same thing.
It did, but that spurred them to do the other alternative, and they have done, done that. And they've combined bigger projects with these LIPS to get their safe harbors, um, year over year.
They also don't have, uh...
Good, good.
Everyone should know, right?
You got to identi- identify yourself, you got to identify yourself and, and address the board.
All right. Dr. Gray Rock. The other issue, of course, is Medfield doesn't have water issues, doesn't have solar issues.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier to, uh...
Yeah. Carol?
I would endorse, Carol Mitchell, Cooley Street. I would endorse the idea of not segregating the affordable units. My understanding is when Leland Farms Townhouses had some affordable units, that those were dispersed by lottery, and I know one of the families that ended up with it. And my understanding was, it looked just like the neighbors. I would hate to think that somebody could drive into a development and say, oh, those are the affordable folks, and these are the folks who could afford market. I would like to think that it would be interspersed.
I would agree with that comment, except, um, I do agree that, in general, the concept of what is, in a homeownership project where you have all units being homeownership and that twenty-five percent, and they say, well, externally they have to be the same, but internally they have different finishes in most, in a standard forty-B, uh, S H I situation, that you wouldn't want them to be clustered. You want, you would want them to be integrated to, um, from, for a social benefit. I think, to a degree, with us asking for these units to be rental and to be, um, managed by the rental, either, we haven't figured out exactly how it would go, whether it would be the rental agency for the other rental project or with our current Woodhaven rental management, there's, it's already a little, a little different because they would not probably be part of the condo association, so there would be a natural segregation. And because of the, the fifty-five plus and because of what we are seeking to do, to provide an option that is, um, that is in the affordable range, that is, um, a realistic option for some of our seniors, whereas an ownership age-restricted unit, um, it will be interesting to see how fifty-nine North Main pans out for filling those three ownership, uh, S H I units. But it, there's a lot of, there certainly are social implications, and we certainly wouldn't want to, we do want to encourage whatever developments get built, that they are vibrant communities, and we certainly, there's no point in having houses that just don't add anything to our community from, uh, the idea to have a diverse population, that everyone brings something to the table that benefits, so I...
So, just one follow-up on that. In the case of an over fifty-five project, the affordable piece should be designed to meet the needs of seniors who need affordable units, whether that, and then it be a rental situation or homeownership. And any of these projects are going to go under extensive review, not just by your organization, but has to go to town meeting. So, whether it gets counted in formally and is a language for, is arbitrated every time one comes up, we don't, we don't give up our rights to say, we don't want to do this, correct? If, if a, an over fifty-five with an affordable component is on the table, we evaluate that project on its, its merits at that time and our community's needs at that time. Isn't that how this would work?
Yes.
So, I, I guess if the, if, if we're trying to create seven units that the town could potentially purchase and then integrate into a Woodhaven style, that's going to be for the town's needs, and I don't see two bedrooms necessarily being what we want to be acquiring. I think more one-bedroom units is more realistic for the town, and probably less of an economic impact to us.
Anybody else? Uh, I guess I have a, uh, want to make sure I'm clear on, Jim, on your, um, proposal and, um, your proposal is that, that the, we modify the, um, modify Article One to include, to require comparable size and bedroom count and that they be interspersed within the development. And then you had, uh, an, a option, I guess, for handicap.
I, 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 as I was talking about it and I heard about the handicap, I said to myself, okay, I understand now, if there's a single level, uh, that makes sense. But so, if in fact that's what you're going to provide, then you are providing something different and beneficial. And so, to me, you know, my impression was that that would be equivalent. If you were going to give me a single handicap, fully accessible unit that, that actually you put a handicapped person in, then I, I would, I would say that that, in effect, had some comfortability in it. Um, and so, what I, I thought about was that, okay, that might be too hard to know, uh, early on. So, like, you know, if they have to get past the town meeting approval, then they have to get later on to the planning board. So, if I was going to deposit some power and discretion in the planning board to solve that later prob, prob, problem, when everything had gotten down from the general down to specifics to the construction, then I would, then I would, I would consider that, you would also say that, that the planning board could, could, uh, waive the, the bedroom size comfortability if the, the Affordable Age Restricted unit was, uh, provided to, uh, a, you know, qualified, I don't know if handicapped is the right word these days, but handicapped, uh...
Ten.
I think we all do see that that's being ten, but I don't, I don't think tenancy or homeownership is... or homeownership is restricted. In the language of the current proposal, no matter what you do, they can have this hybrid. So they, they can have a hybrid in their plan, you know, just as the, you know, Abbey Road has a, has a tenant, and has some owners, but it has a tenant. So, I mean, you can do both when you have the own. So that one wasn't as specific in the language I had thought about, John. That was more conceptual.
Then the other, were the corrections, if we're making the correction for chapter forty A?
Well, all the forty B references, as particularly said, later on, all the references in five point six point eight, they all use the superseded reference to forty-five point oh three, forty-five, forty-five point oh three, forty-five point oh two. And those references should all properly be the fifty-six ones. I think the definitions for fifty-six are always fifty-six point oh two.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any discussions about the next process tomorrow evening? Is this the, do we...
Well, the process here is that, is that we can, we, we deliberate, state our opinions about both articles and, and make a decision. And then tomorrow night, advisory will hold a hearing on these two articles and the other articles for the town meeting. And then they'll publish the warrant that'll then be, be given to the town for the December sixth town meeting.
And tomorrow night, we, or you, or somebody presents the article to advisory. It's a sort of formal...
Yeah, we'll, we'll report our decision at advisory. Yeah.
I, I wanted to comment on the fact that I think the input, your input from talking with town council, and Jim's input from the discussion we were having about the affordables has been extraordinarily valuable. And I think the revised version of the EA is something the board should accept with great pleasure. I think it's a great improvement. And it really is, delineates very clearly a policy that the town wants to take to meet the needs of our citizens and others.
Good. I guess...
Do we need to do a vote on Article One? I mean, Article One was something that the planning board, as we've said earlier, has been talking about for the last year. And we've looked at multiple revisions of language and adjusted, or does it require us to have a vote on that since it's, to accept this recent addition? Is that what we're...
Yep.
Voting?
Yep. If you'd like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the addition of language to Section I of five point six point five of special permit requirements to include the encouragement of a higher level of treatment and monitoring for the domestic water supply and wastewater systems.
And was there amendment that you were gonna put in from Jim Murphy's comment?
It's up to us, to be delivered, deliberated.
We need to deliberate.
Yeah.
I think the language has to be fine tuned. I mean, we don't have to vote on that tonight.
Well, we can. So, right now, we have a motion.
On this, on this change?
To, if I understand it correctly, it's to approve Article One as presented with an amendment that includes the language that we handed out is, is Section H utilities in five point six point five.
And I will second that.
Okay, so now, discussion. My thoughts are that, that I think making the corrections to the rest of five point six, as Jim described, just makes good administrative sense.
The rest of the corrections being the, the errors that were in there, and, and what was the other? I was having trouble hearing. The other correction would be?
It's, it's, I'll flip the page. It's, it's, where the, the motion that you just made includes correcting where it reads chapter forty A.
To read forty-one, Section eight, one K, at sequential.
Right. And it's really saying, make the other corrections in the rest of five point six.
Should I amend my motion to include those corrections and do this in one motion?
Well, we're in discussion, so we can.
We're in discussion.
If we think we need to go back and make that amendment? I do. Relative to the other comments that have been made with Article One, I guess, I think, I think, I guess I think making these other changes that have been proposed, I, I'm not prepared to do that, and I think the article should go as it is, without the other changes that Jim described. So, I, I think including the corrections is the only other amendment I'd favor.
I think at this time, I would concur. I think there's some valid arguments to be made, but I'd like more time, but given our time constraint, and given that we'd like to be presenting this to advisory tomorrow evening, the, the further language changes I'd like to look at for perhaps the next iteration.
Yeah.
Can we still, can we vote on this and still amend it before town meeting?
Sure.
Because I think all those points were valid, but the only problem is, you'd really like to sit down and, and look at how it fits.
Yeah. I mean, the, it's, the results of the advisor hearing may result in, in a change, and conceivably, there could be an amendment made on the floor at town meeting. It's obviously a lot easier to not do that, just to keep it clear. I think relative to this specific project, we can talk about additional changes to the special permit before we approve this, before we approve or disapprove the, before we discuss Article Two. But in terms of Article One, I think we've got clear language, and I'd like to stick with what we've got for, for this town meeting.
Okay. So back to what's questioned here. Can we leave Article One as amended, and then work on this project based on that, and then bring that in next year?
Yep.
If we wanted to.
Yes.
One question with respect to the cleanup changes we're making here. Is that something that has to be done through an amendment process at town meeting, or is there any sort of discretion to, especially with a superseded reference, to, to correct the reference once the, the old reference is out of date?
Once, once the warrant is signed by the selectman, the language can't be changed except on town meeting floor?
I, I was talking about the, the superseded references that, that we've identified at this point. Just in terms of, of having something to present that doesn't have all sorts of extraneous cleanup changes that need to be made as well. And so the proposal at town meeting is, is as streamlined as possible. Is it possible to, to make these, to correct these citations that now cite to outdated provisions? Is there a different mechanism to do that besides...
It can be a handout, it can be a handout that incorporates the...
The answer, I think, Will, you're asking, does it have to go to town meeting?
Does it have to be voted at a town meeting, or is there another mechanism to, to correct the bylaw?
Vote at town meeting.
Even, even when it's referencing a superseded?
Yes.
Or no longer accurate? Okay.
Right. But can, can it be voted at town meeting as part of the amendments, the, the substantial amendments that we're making, without having to explain every change in numbering? I mean, I think what Will's getting at is, it just gets very cumbersome at town meeting, and people don't know what you're talking about anyway, five point six, or, you know, the various numbers of state laws. Is there a way to do that and just sort of slip it in there, if you like, at town meeting? Or, or label it as, as several minor corrections of, of numbering?
There could be just a sentence that says, correct.
Yeah, that's right. Something like that.
Updated, updated references.
Updated references, that, correct.
No, it doesn't change the substance.
Yeah, updated references and, and numbering and lettering.
Well, for simplicity's sake, first, this evening, can I amend my motion to just, I mean, I, I guess we're discussing, but it seems to me the simplest, just because we're gonna lose people, and I do wanna deliberate on Article Two, but for this evening, can we agree to that, the simplest is to agree to change all the references to forty A to forty-one, Section eighty-one K, as sequential, to, and also to add the language that town council has already reviewed for H under utilities?
Yeah, I think we could just say, an updated references.
And in further language, would, I think everyone feels the need that if there's further, further language changes, we'd wanna review.
I'm just gonna say that, when you do that, you still are in the same place, because the final warrants are already there. Those, the final warrant has already been issued by the selectman. So when you come to town meeting, and you adopt just what you said, you have to put that forward as your first thing that the advisory has to do. They're gonna say that, you got your warrant, everybody, but the planning board has made a slight adjus, adjustment to it. And so it seems to me that if you're gonna do that part, you might as well do...
Wait, the whole thing.
At least three of them that you talked about right now. The forty, the, the forty-eight versus forty-one, the H versus utilities, and forty-five versus fifty-six. You should do those. On, on the other one that you're not yet ready to talk about, which I talked about, I'm happy to send you language, and it may make its way eventually up to town meeting floor. But what I would say to that is, in the meantime, as the developer, is, is he okay with that? Because if he can incorporate that into his plan for Article Two, if it in fact is adopted, it makes everybody's life easier, that it's kind of like a non-issue. It's already all taken care of.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's, it's kind of an iterative process now, which is good, while you do this. It's a good iterative process, but you still are going to have to tell town meeting that the thing they have on their warrant, that they printed out, has been changed. And this is what it is, and the motion that's gonna be brought forward by advisory to adopt it is gonna be based on the new replacement language, whether it has one replacement, or three, or if I had my way, four replacements.
Yeah. And I, and I, Jim, I, I agree with what you just said. I think the, the warrant has entire five point six in it. So I think just saying, I think just saying, update the references in five point six covers it.
But to, to Jim's further suggestion for amendment, we, advisory meets tomorrow night, and we, we're to have this meeting a week ago, but we couldn't for complicated reasons. So the, we're having this meeting the night before advisory, which doesn't give us time to present a coherent amendment of your fourth point.
No, but I think it gives us, we, we, let's discuss Article, Article One, then when we get to Article Two, we can, we'll get back and ask, to ask company if they're willing to make changes to the preliminary development plan.
Right. Yeah, I was just trying to get at the process.
Yeah. So, we've got a motion with the amendment that was handed out, and now, and, and now we, we're, our discussion says we'd like to amend that motion to include, update the references in five point six. So, is there further discussion? Well, is that motion seconded?
A second.
Actually, is that motion made?
You'll make it, I'll second.
You're confusing me.
So, I know Eddie May made the first motion.
Yeah.
So, okay. So it's made, it's seconded, and then further discussion. All those in favor? Okay, Article One. So now, we're, so now we're back to talking about Article Two, which is the preliminary development plan. And I think we've agreed, we've reviewed everything that's in it, and there's now a comment saying, can the affordable housing units be interspersed in the, better interspersed in the community, or can they be limited to handicap, handicap accessible, or waive the bedroom size in, in lieu of, waive the bedroom size if they're restricted to handicap occupants? I think identifying it to one specific tenant doesn't really do much.
Well, I think what I said was comparable in size and bedroom count.
Yeah.
Unless such requirement is waived by the planning board, and what I said, the waiver could be, because the one bedroom unit will be a fully handicapped accessible unit.
Okay. Is that doable?
You're walking down some slippery slopes with language. That's, that's the only problem here. I certainly have no objection to working with the planning board on location, interspersed, 'cause I, I still think the planning board's gonna realize that's the best location for them, both convenience, access, and services that may be needed for those units, putting handicap spaces out front with big ramps and everything else. But I'm, I'd like to keep them at the one bedroom, because we are dividing, conquering our septic and our water capacity. So if we make them legitimate fifty-five or older units, then I'm gonna lose three units out of the eighty-eight rental project, because I've just taken three hundred and thirty gallons more by going from a hundred and ten gallons to a hundred and fifty gallons each. So, this was in reaction, the, the seven units were created to satisfy the board and the, the housing partnerships' request. And so I think we've, we've gone down the right direction there, and I think we're comfortable with that. Inter dispersed, located, design review, I have no problem with.
Yeah, I guess...
I just, I'm just gonna say that it's really important for the developer to fully disclose the way in which the eighty-eight relate to the sixty-seven and the shared septic system. And if you don't say that upfront, and then questions come out at town meeting about it, it jeopardizes you getting your whole project. So it's not a good idea to so not stress the relationship between the eighty-eight and the sixty-seven, and the amendment to Section H that you just passed, and not tell the people why you're doing it. It just is not a good idea.
We've...
Because you're going to lose votes. You have to get two-thirds votes. You have to tell people upfront what this means. If you're gonna have a shared septic system, and the eighty-eight and the sixty-seven go together in a certain way, and because if you go up one or down one, you're gonna lose something or have another degree of, of scrutiny by the DEP or somebody else. You have to tell this curious town that. This curious town will not sit for people not telling them what may be a very good business judgment. You should tell us why they're there. This was hidden throughout the whole time until now, that the reason why we're getting subsized affordable units is because of the seventy, the sixty-seven relationship to the eighty-eight, which is not part of Article Two. And that's just not fair to the townspeople who you're asking to vote for this, two-thirds to one-third.
Yeah, I think I may, I mean, we, we've discussed that, that there has, that it has to be very clear, that, that Article Two has to do with one project, but it's really tied in. I mean, we've discussed that, and that will be disclosed.
Yeah, I, I, it's, yeah, Jim, I, Jim, I understand what you...
But if, if you go all the way back down to the reason, real reason, why you're not putting in a two-bedroom affordable unit in the, in the, in the age affordable, is not because that's... in the age affordable, is not because that's good policy for all other age affordable units that are gonna be developed in the town, it's because of this unique circumstance of tying one part of this project to the other part of the project. And if that's the case, you know, I think you're gonna lose some votes.
Yeah, I.
You're talking so.
You have to, you have to say to yourself, okay, I don't wanna lose those votes. So if that means I have to make my project sixty-five units, I don't know, or sixty-four units, so I don't lose that vote, then now's the time to do it, because you're gonna lose votes if people bring this up.
It's been discussed in previous meetings, but not at this hearing clearly, so you're correct. But the balance between the two, and that the water is, the water supply and the wastewater treatment plant capacity affects both projects, has been discussed in previous meetings, but not at this hearing to the degree, so I take your point well. But, just a sec, because there's, Michael Lee wants to talk behind you, he's behind you. But, so, so the relationship, though, was discussed, and in a previous planning board meetings, with a known balance of just this discussion. So, we did talk about it, and this seemed like a good balance. So, we can discuss it more at length. You can, and Mike, I want.
I just, I guess, so, the standard argument when we're trying to look at a typical forty-B project of why can't we make the unit, the development a smaller development? Why does it have to be so many units? Is that the number of market rate units are needed to offset the cost for the affordable units? So, that's one reason why we're looking at this EA, and we're not necessarily holding this to the exact same extremes of a forty-B project, because we're trying to encourage it to a different level. We're also thinking of what is the market out there? Well, the market has been, there's, appears to be a demand for a market of rentals for our empty nesters with the, what we're seeing with Woodhaven. So the model is a one-bedroom apartment, as Woodhaven has, not necessarily two-bedroom houses. So, I guess, if we, the conundrum becomes, if we hold it to the same, that the affordable units need to be the exact same standard, then will there need to be more market rate units in order to maintain the price point of the market rates not be, I don't know where it all falls. I know that all of these things, they do have a cost analysis, and there's an unintended consequence if you push on one thing, and at the end of the day, what is it that we really are seeking? Well, I don't think we really wanna go much bigger than sixty-seven units. The seven units, SHI units being smaller, also take up a smaller footprint, so as far as the visual impact of the development as a whole, I guess I have less problem or less issue with those not being two-bedroom duplexes, because of the purpose that they're serving, and that there's been a demonstrated need for more senior rental units. So that's, if otherwise, if we're pushing it to the same standards as forty-B, then we're in a different. Each development can have its own, for this particular project, I think this might make sense. I mean, there certainly will be a place to look at the design of it as we go forward, and make sure that there's nothing, you certainly don't want it to not have the same, you know, pleasant space, but does it have to be two bedrooms? I don't know.
So, my question is, this new version of EA zoning was to have three options, right? One is overly, over fifty-five, with a ten percent affordable component, an affordable type project, or an over fifty-five with no affordable, correct? Is that still a part of this?
It still is, right, we didn't.
Okay, so if we make the first option, which is over fifty-five with a ten percent affordable component, we make that affordable component so structurally cumbersome in the zoning language, isn't that just gonna defeat any of these options down the road of encouraging developers to go with option one for over fifty-five, rather than a no affordable component fifty-five project? And the other part of this is, in the language that's being proposed, is what's in the forty-B language, which are developments that have very little purview, really, once they're on the table. And so the state said, well, we wanna make sure the developers are adhering to at least a certain standard, because the town can't turn around and really have a fair negotiation, say, make those affordable units more like the other ones. They had to bake that in, because it doesn't get reviewed. This is all gonna be reviewed, and it's all subject to a dialogue part of our planning board. So I'd say leave the authority and discretion for you guys, because this is all about cultivating the right projects for the town, and giving developers and you guys that option to bring it to the, to town meeting. Each time, they all have to come back to town meeting, so let each one never die on the logical structure at that time at our meetings.
I think that's the point of this preliminary development plan process. They're unique to each project. Neil.
Neil Kessler, forty-three Page Farm. I'm still just wanting to wrap my head a little bit around, so the rental units right now are smaller than the other units that would be for sale within this EA project, correct? And it's so, I'm trying to understand the rationale for why they wouldn't be bigger. Addie's identified one of them, which is, you know, as a rental, it's actually maybe more advantageous in terms of your targeting to come in there. But I'm not sure I understand, Ben, what you were saying about the slippery slope of putting that kind of language in there in terms of capacity. Can you just sort of elaborate a little bit? I just didn't really understand why, I mean, given that there's, you proposed an eighty-eight unit and an eighty-four unit there in the past, and the capacity was there. Is the, are the actual services, the wastewater treatment, gonna be smaller, so there's a trade-off? I just wanna get a sort of better sense of that.
We'll have to go into a final design at a certain capacity for both sewer and water. And as I've said to this board before, if this is not the EA zoning, I can pretty much guarantee you there's not enough capacity for both the eighty-eight for-sale three-bedroom and the eighty-eight rental, because that is almost fifty thousand gallons of required water and sewer.
But then, sorry, just let me pause for a second. But then, isn't this sort of concern that the planning board has, that both projects will come, obviated by what you're saying? You're saying that wouldn't happen, those two projects, then?
No, I think what the planning board's concerned is that if there's no vote for the EA, then the only thing that will come would be the for-sale. There would be no rental.
So you would do both of them as for-sale?
No, there wouldn't be enough capacity for both. There'd have to be a smaller version of for-sale and a smaller version of rental, or no rental and all for-sale.
Because the original villages in Coolidge Crossing was, one was for-sale at eighty-eight units, and the other was rental at eighty-four. So you're saying that there is no longer capacity for that?
I would have to find more capacity than we currently found. I'd have to find more water than we have currently found, for both projects.
May I ask a question? If you add a bedroom to a senior, does it add to that a hundred and fifty gallons a day?
A one-bedroom unit is a hundred and ten gallons.
Oh.
A senior unit is a hundred and fifty.
Oh, okay.
A two-bedroom is two, two-twenty.
Okay.
So, and it's not, I mean, quite honestly, if there's a third option, we would've brought in a sixty unit with no affordable. But we were, we knew that would not probably be at this point of preliminary site plan approval with the planning board, because the planning board had great concerns about it at a minimum staying even on the SHI level.
I don't, yeah, I don't think there's anything hidden here, but it's certainly a lot clearer.
So this, this a ten thousand is a big number, right, in the capacity, septic capacity, right?
Not with the waste treatment.
Why we have.
Wastewater treatment plant.
Right, right, so he wants to get under ten thousand.
No, no, we don't have that limitation, but there's still.
Well, that's why I don't, I don't.
There's still a limitation on a leach field at the moment, and there's only so many gallons that the system can disperse, but.
So, Richard, what is that number? What is, what is that?
I don't know, whatever the capacity of the town. But, so the ten thousand of the fields, because it was not public, it was not wastewater treatment, it was private septic. And so you're up to ten thousand, you're allowed to, but over that, you need wastewater treatment, which this project needs.
All right, but if you do sixty-seven, the way they just did it, sixty times one-fifty is nine thousand, and seven, right, and seven times one-ten is seven-seventy, so that's ninety-seven seventy. So, is there any unique reason why it happenstance that sixty-seven units is less than ten thousand that we, as suburban residents, should knowledge? That's my question. And if it is, because, okay, if I don't get, if I don't build my other project, then I can put in a, you know, non-packaged treatment plant to service the sixty-seven units that's less than ten thousand, is that just me, you know, reading conspiracy novels? Or, you know, is there something there?
But there's also the, and to piggyback on what you're saying, because I'd love to ask that same question and put something else into it, which is that there is no legal tie between the two projects. And in fact, from my understanding, the developer did not want any kind of, did not wanna be compelled, and you can correctly, I'm happy to be correct, but did not wanna be compelled to have to build the rental unit project in ti, as a part of a condition of granting EA project. So I would like to know the same.
Could I?
Yeah.
Jim, you haven't been to the other meeting, so you probably didn't get a lot of this. But we started out with doing groundwater, we submitted a public permit application, it's been in all the publications, for a groundwater discharge permit for up to thirty-five thousand gallons. The initial hydroanalysis in the locations where we first tested had proven that we're not gonna get thirty-five thousand gallons right there, so we'd have to start the process over and expand the area. Would we do that? Potentially. Could they just slide up the hill more? Potentially, but it's another nine-month review process, which I don't really, since the eighty-eight number on the rental was predetermined to me by the large project status, and I know I have twenty-five to twenty-six thousand gallons of septic, the sixty-seven units coincidentally is around ten thousand gallons, but it's more of a working backwards from the thirteen to fourteen thousand gallons I need at the apartment building, with ten thousand being dedicated to the fifty-five or older projects. So therefore, I'm in that twenty-four to twenty-five thousand gallons, which is the system I'm working on, it's the designs I'm moving forward on. If the fifty-five or older were not to pass, I would have an option of proceeding with twenty-five thousand gallon capacity and determining the highest and best use for my benefit of where I would use it, or I would have to go out and restart over my groundwater analysis and well locations to try to get myself into thirty-five to forty, or forty-five thousand gallons. The eighty-eight unit for-sale project was started as a three-bedroom, because the Board of Health took me to court to determine that every townhouse in town needs to be three-bedroom. So, that has now been overruled. So the three-bedroom, which started eighteen months ago, maybe they all become two-bedrooms. So the eighty-eight units for-sale project could potentially all become two-bedrooms now because of the land court decision, which now changes me to two-hundred-and-twenty gallons times eighty-eight. So now I'm more in the seventeen or eighteen thousand gallons for the for-sale project, and I have some capacity for the rental, but I don't have enough capacity for the rental. So, I'm dealing with three or four different moving parts. I've never been shy about what those moving parts are. I've never been shy about telling the planning board. My hydro reports are published at the state level, and we're, right now, have fields for about twenty-six thousand gallons. And that's what these two projects, as I proposed, equal, because we did fifty-six one-bedrooms in the apart, in the rental, and nine threes and twenty-three twos. So that's where the gallons all came from. So we know with that well field and that septic field, we can do about twenty-six thousand gallons. Not to say we couldn't do fifty thousand, we'd have to go test again to do it.
Okay. Neil.
The original premise was that you were dealing with an either-or situation of eighty-eight units at one of our, and eighty-four at eighty-four Coolidge. From what I'm understanding about capacity, without going back to some degree to the drawing board or relocating some of that capacity, that's actually not what you're dealing with. So what you're dealing with is sixty-seven, and, you know, this is just me spitballing, sixty-seven market, sixty-seven for-sale with twenty-five percent affordable, and eighty-four or eighty-eight units on the other property, both as fortyBs, which from a housing production perspective is actually better, because you get more affordable units. So the, at least the premise, in my mind, the premise isn't so ironclad, hearing the fact that the capacity is lower than was originally proposed in the two projects when they first were put out.
However, there's also been the alternate proposal, it was just mentioned this evening, that perhaps it would be the eighty-eight townhouses, and they would be deed restricted two-bedrooms, and they would still probably attract families, because they would not be age-restricted, and we would not have any rental project on the other parcel, or there'd be a few minimums.
So in other words, there's the threat from the other side of the table, that if you don't do this, then I'm not gonna do what you want.
Well, the threat hangs over us from, for fortyBs.
I understand, but that's a different dynamic than what I could hear earlier.
Michael.
We have threats anywhere in town where there's large plots of acreage, and there's gonna be a forty-B project. So, we got ourselves into this hole, we've got somebody working with us, let's keep this ball rolling. This is crazy. This town will micromanage these things into the ground, and what we're gonna lose is no developer will ever wanna do anything cooperative with us. They're just gonna come and bring us forty-B after forty-A after forty-Z, and we'll have ourselves in a rut. We've just gotta get this done and move on, we've got other problems to solve.
Mark.
So, Mark Brown.
And then I wanna wrap this up.
Thirty-three Greenlee, I just have a question for Mr. Stevens, which is, would you consider the EA project in combination with a smaller rental project? Because I foresee a difficult, difficult sales job to the town to have a hundred and fifty-some odd units between the two projects. And, you know, I think if that number could come down, I would think that the prospects of the EA passage would improve.
There's a critical mass for these things. Would I look at a slightly lower number? Yes, but everything I've been hearing from feedback has been more, not less. Because there are a few, I mean, for anyone who understands the well regulation, doing rentals in town is going to be nearly impossible unless it's a public water supply. You just can't. You can't even do it legally, you can't even do a duplex on one well. It's not legal. So, as to the Medford solution, that's not a solution for Sherburne, because you're never gonna be able to do a four-unit rental, or a six or an eight-unit rental. So, everything that's been told to me has been, the eighty-eight number is not my number, it was predetermined because of a large project status. The site is plenty big under forty-B standards. I'm willing to talk about that project, but there is a critical mass on these things where the management doesn't make sense anymore when you get below a certain, because they're not profitable.
Marian.
What's the scale of that, sixty?
Well, we have a, we have a sixty-unit project in Ashland, which has the same rental rates, and I've been told that, you know, I can't hire a manager for, he's only there two days a week, and I gotta share him with another project, because it just doesn't work. So, I'm overpaying for my management fee and some other things, so I can't. So from an institutional investor, I could never sell that project. I'd have to sell it to a smaller guy like myself, so.
Marian.
Yeah.
Can I just take one more comment?
Not yet. In a moment. I understand your thinking on economies of scale, from your point of view, those make sense. What I didn't understand is something you've said a couple of times, and this isn't a criticism, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying. You said the eighty-eight units in the rental project had to be eighty-eight because of the large project status. But isn't that, the large product status is. But isn't that, the large product stat, status, is that you can't add more than a certain quantity to the town at any one time, but it doesn't require you to add, say, just under the limit, you could add any number smaller than that?
Correct. I meant it from an upper end, not a lower end. I meant it from no more than 88.
Oh, right. Sure.
But you're saying that a smaller project doesn't make sense in terms of management costs for rentals?
A few units smaller? Sure, but, but we looked at the models where we, where we, you know, split up the buildings, the wells, it all became very difficult with the well issues, with the access issues, so we wanted to do it in a building that could have dual elevators in it, because quite honest, we feel there's going to be more demand for the older resident renter than the younger resident renter. So there's, we came up with that number based upon a lot of conversations, and that is, that's how we decided to file it with the state. We probably could have filed it for more if it wasn't for the limitation of the large project status.
Jim?
I, I do want you to know that there is certainly a lot of sentiment that is favorable to you going forward in this town, and I don't want you to think that by asking curious questions that that implies that there is a lack of support. But I did want you to also know that the nature of Sherburne is to be curious in their questions, and it makes it very important that you really do lay out where you have some limitations that you have balanced and may consider judgments of. And it's really important that you, in effect, say that the reason that you started with 88 on the units is because if you were over 88, your large project status, it's a higher degree of ask from the state. So you stop, you started that one at 88, and then you tried to build something that was going to be 35,000 square foot of capac, 35,000 gallons of capacity, and you might not have that capacity. And so that is going to probably influence, but ultimately goes on the combination of these two parcels. And, you know, I really think we shouldn't hold back on facing the fear of disclosing that possibility, particularly since you're going to get people who are going to say, okay, now that I get this, aha, even though it's not an aha, because remember, most people are going to be like me, they didn't show up till now, they didn't have the benefit of all the time that you guys already talked about some of this thing. They're going to think everything is a new aha at town meeting. And they're going to say, oh, I just saw your slide up there that compares 88 units on the 104 site versus 67 as being the only alternative. And that's really not the case. It was the starting point, but it has evolved over time, and it's much better if you say, well, it started this way. It's evolved over time with lots of good discussions with the planning board and others, and this seems to be a really workable plan for us, and it still gives us some flexibility and maybe gives us some movement later on on the other one. I ju, I just don't think you can say, please vote for this because the other alternative is so awful, so just vote for that. That, that's, that might get you some votes of some people. I think that's a lot of telling you. I think you've got to get the other votes, of people who think, look, you've really tried to work with the town, came up with a creative solution, you put your litigation on hold, and you come up with something that you think is really going to work, and we not only think it's going to work here, we think it's going to work in other applications throughout the town. I just really would encourage you to kind of take that as more of a guiding principle than it's an either-or. You're fooled if you don't vote for this. This is my man on the street.
Thank you.
I agree with you, but in Ben's defense, in previous discussions, he disclosed that right from the beginning, as far as we started with this many units, and you even said, there's a reason why it was 88 and 88, and there's a reason why, you know. So he did disclose all that. Unfortunately, there have been so many discussions over the months, it wasn't brought up tonight, but it was brought up many, many times. So he wasn't, he wasn't trying to hide anything.
I, I don't, I don't think he was, but I just know, everybody's going to be asking about this septic capacity at town meetings. Particularly, it's going to be highlighted by the fact that you're mending Section 8 to put in the thing about, oh, you can have this off-site, it's going to raise that, oh, that's going to be, that's a, you know, a real change, it's not on his site, it's on the other site, there's some shared relationship between them. People are going to think that way. So it's really important that you lay that out, and you, you phrase the way in which the 88 came up, the original 88 for 104, and how it's evolved, as opposed to, if you don't vote for this, I'm absolutely positively getting 88.
88 on 104 was never anything that was up for discussion. 88 rental on, on, at, 88 rental at 84 Coolidge is the 40B, and that's, but the 88 number for the, that was never, that was the, the 40B, 88 rental, 104.
104 was 88.
Oh, because of the Coolidge crossing.
There was Coolidge crossing.
Right.
Jim, I get your point. I, I think, I think we've got it, and I think, I think I'm ready to end the, to make a decision on Article 2.
Just one more comment, maybe.
I have a kind of a general question. What do we normally disclose when we go into a town meeting? Because I know when we last voted on something controversial besides the EA over on Maple was downtown, there wasn't a lot of background information on like where we started and where we ended up then. So, you know, yeah, the town's curious, but I know a lot of people here are not that curious. They're going to want to know how it's going to impact their life right now, not how it impacted how the whole process of making sausage. So what do you guys normally disclose when we go into this town meeting?
Normally, you talk about the proposal. So, but, but I think Jim's points are well taken. I think, I, I understand what he's saying, so.
Yeah, I agree. I still think that everybody in this town thinks about making sausages, they think about their current, and those who are young are going to be looking at the rental and saying, is that going to impact my life with pine town? They're not going to care about, there's going to be a group that's going to care about the watering, so there's going to be a group that cares about their schools. There's not the universal, we're hiding stuff attitude, I don't think.
Okay. I mean, I, I think we're talking about, we're, this is a hearing, so it's being disclosed, whatever, but, but it's also great, we're getting feedback on what should be presented at town meeting.
May I ask a question? There's been a major point made here that things are more variable than it has appeared. What is the range of alternatives to the EA? Can you say that simply for the 104 Coolidge? What would you say were your range of alternatives to, if the EA fails? And I don't want to put you on the spot if, am I? Of course you do.
Spending four years in court battling Sherburne, I would, I'm not quite sure. I would take, I, you know, I'd love to have, if the EA doesn't pass, I'd love to have a working committee of two or three members of this board, two or three members on the zoning board, and somebody who cares and said, let's do 60 units of two-bedroom there and 50 units of rental here, or something, you know, some rationale. I just, I'm used to, I'm used to the boards telling me no and telling me to go to court, so I, I don't know. I have to play that into my opinions and decisions when the time comes. So the reason why I was doing this in the first place was, I'm basically putting my hands in the planning board and saying, the EA zoning is, I've got no protection. I don't have 40B protection. I'm assuming it's the right thing, I'm assuming it's wanted, I'm assuming I got flexibility in what matters in the EA zone, which is neighborhood buffer, aesthetics, how they look, how it's laid out. Forget the function, the function is always the function. But that's where I thought we could make some progress, and that's why I came this direction.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? I don't know.
Well, that answers my question.
I know I'm testing for water and sewer, I know I have control of the property for as long as I want to control the property.
But you don't own it.
I don't own the 104 site.
You don't own which site?
The 104 site.
Oh, that's why.
I have a limited option on it.
Melki or Kiore is on there.
Right. I own, I own the 84 site, which has the water and the sewer.
Well, at one point, Ben, not to drag this on too much longer past 9 o'clock, at one point, you did tell us that if, if the EA didn't go through, that you would most likely do the 40B project that you already have in the works. So that's part of the answer, right there.
It's the more profitable project than the rental.
I mean, so, I mean, we have to kind of, people ask us, what'll happen if the EA doesn't pass, and we, we need to give an honest answer, and that's what we've heard from you so far.
Yeah, and that is the correct answer. It's the more profitable project.
Of how many units? 88?
Of the eight.
Up to?
No, but that's, that's what's changed here in the last 20 minutes, which is, it has been proposed that the alternative is an 88-unit Coolidge crossing project. And what I'm hearing tonight is that the capacity for wastewater treatment does not permit that if you're going to have 88 units at 84 Coolidge. So that's where your balance game goes.
That's right.
Full proc, so, so the 67 and the 88, that combination.
Of the, you're talking about the 88 rental.
Yeah.
Specify, yeah.
88 and 84 Coolidge, 67 and 104. That number, that whole number beats the 25, 27,000 gallon capacity, you're talking, you've commodified what you've got, not the 35 with the original. So that's why the possibility of something sort of, I mean, if that's the best configuration we think will work, but yes, you could do something smaller. It's not, it's not any longer, 88 at 104 and 84 at 84, which is what it was originally when they were both 40Bs. And, I mean, to be honest, is what has been pitched in the previous hearings we've had here, which is, if I don't do Meadow Brook Commons, I'm doing the crossing. But now, the capacity is no, or not, then the.
No, we are. That's the one we would do.
Right, but the thing is, is you would do the 88 ownership, right?
Correct.
But you'd have to bring the 84 units at 84 Coolidge, the original villagers' proposal down because of your limited capacity.
Or out.
Or out.
Down or out. So this is something new that we all heard new last week, Neil.
No units for 84 doesn't pass. Think about that.
Right.
That's the point, Neil.
That, that's the point.
I didn't, I didn't waste five years of my life not to have some sort of leverage and control, and, you know, that's the point, is, the point is, it's, and I was very honest with this board, and I said, it's the 66 units, the 88 units for sale is a $45 million project, the 88 units for rent, it's worth about 10 or 11 million dollars by the time you get done.
It's a win-win if it's a win for the town, because it's definitely a win for you to have the, that the EA.
And it's not a win for the town.
No, I'm saying it's a, if the town.
Okay, you know what?
You're just punching holes in my argument.
Yeah, wait, wait a minute.
Argue for the town, I can appreciate that. Don't just punch holes in my argument, argue for the town.
Yeah, yeah.
What do you think's appropriate?
Okay, hold on, sir. Give me my shoe, I need, hold on.
Yes, go ahead.
You address the board.
Yes.
You address the board, and we'll be okay. And we're going to wrap this up.
Okay.
So now let me, no?
Sorry.
You're done, right now. So what we're going to do right now is, this has been disclosed in the past, but to Jim's point, wasn't made clear until late in this hearing.
Yes.
So I, I got that message, I think that's a great message. And the, the proposal that we've got here, this EA proposal was considered based on the original concepts, and then as it, as it changed, as we got, as we understood capacities, it's been discussed, so that I, for one, believe this is still the best, this is where we, this is the best proposal, it's the best for the town. That, that making this 104 Coolidge, making it EA as proposed, and at these numbers as proposed, and enabling the relationship with, with 84 Coolidge with the apartments as a 40B as has been proposed, is the best for the town. We, we get a lot of affordable units with the apartments, and we get a lot of revenue with low cost, and we don't lose any, any ground on the, on the EA proposal. I believe that's, this is a good balance, and I think we can, we can haggle over variations, but in the end, this is a good balance. It's good for the town, and the timing is right. If we don't pass this now, we can try again at the spring town meeting, but we're going to be exposed to more time for another 40B to come in on other projects. The sooner we get this project, I believe, this, when we get this project underway and approved, I think it's good for the town because we get 40B protection, and we're, and we will be as far along as I, as any project in getting to, in getting to 10%. So, which is the long-term goal, I believe. So I, so we, we have deliberated this, and I do believe this is the best, the best route. Are there options? Sure there are, but I think this is a good one, and I don't see anything better. So I think it's, unless somebody's got something new to say.
We just reinforce the, Michael's comment coming from the regional school committee, that one of the advantages of the EA is the nice amount of money it will provide the town, and most of that will go to the schools, and otherwise, we're going to have a hole.
Yeah, I think that's, it's good to reinforce, it's.
It reinforces that this is the best balanced proposal.
Okay. So.
And you're right, it has to be looked at together, John, I concede.
Does the board have any further discussion? Then I'll take a motion to approve, to approve Article 2 with the, with the discussion we had about changes that included, I'll look at my, I'll look at my list, changes to the special permit to include, no, we agreed to, sorry, I've got to get to my list, to include the trail connections, bike racks, additional screening.
John, I think the bike racks were part of the rental project discussion, and not part of the, although, you know, bike racks are great, doesn't matter. Mm-hmm, yeah. Bike racks, yeah.
Agreed. Okay. And the, I guess, I'll just say, the other comments that we made earlier relative to, which we agreed to, which were putting dimensions on driveways and, and acknowledging that we agree that the wetlands, ponds, and streams have been, have been noted, correctly noted, well noted, I should say, on the, on the plans, but they're not yet confirmed by a conservation committee, which will happen later.
Floor plans for the affordable units?
Thank you. Floor plans for affordable, and anything else I didn't mention that was previously agreed to. So that's a motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
The housing partnership is, do we, we are a publicly posted meeting as a housing partnership. Can we take a, does there, does anyone wish to have a deliberation? I guess we, should I adjourn to the back of the room, or how, I know we're trying to finish up here, but are there?
Well, I'd like to close the planning board hearing.
Close the planning board hearing, and then we'll.
So.
Didn't want to lose everybody.
Yeah, let me, let me close the planning board hearing. We did agree at the beginning of the hearing to limit our agenda, at the beginning of our planning board meeting, to limit our agenda just to this hearing, and I think And I think that covers everything we need to in the hearing. I will remind everybody, there's an advisory hearing tomorrow. Encourage you all to go if you can. And that please come, I hope you all come to the special town meeting December 6, at 7:00 PM at Pine Hill School. And tell your friends. So with that, I'll conclude the hearing. Is there a motion to conclude the hearing? I guess we'll do that.
Motion to conclude the hearing.
Second.
For the discussion, all those in favor? Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.